Welcome everyone, we'll go ahead and get started. Evelyn, can we have a roll call please?
Trustee Marcus.
Yeah.
Trustee Weekly.
Present.
Trustee McAvoy.
Present.
Vice President Wells.
Here.
President Lawson.
Here. Welcome everyone, happy new year to our first board meeting of the 2024 school year. Si necesita traducción en español, por favor llama al nueve siete ocho nueve nuevos no nueve nueve cero cinco uno tres siete y presione ocho tres siete siete cero cuatro uno el signo de numero para la contraseña. Did I get this right? The public is encouraged to speak to the board on issues of concern whether or not the issue is on the agenda. To address the board, please complete a speaker's card. Available online or at the entrance to the boardroom and hand it to Evelyn. If you wish to speak to the board on a subject listed on the agenda, you'll be called to the podium at the time that the item is being considered by the board. If the item is not on the agenda, you'll be called to the podium during oral communication. Public comments are limited to three minutes per person, per topic unless otherwise noted. Consent items are voted on simultaneously with one motion and are not debated or discussed by the board. The action indicated on each item is deemed to have been considered in full and action will be taken as worded in the item. If a board member or superintendent so requests, any item can be moved in order or removed entirely from the agenda. If you want to discuss an item on consent, please let us know with the speaker's card before we change the agenda so we can pull it from consent items for discussion. That said, do we have any changes to the agenda? All right, men, do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you, all those in favor?
Aye.
Item five, oral communication, do we have any speakers cards?
No speakers cards.
Thank you. So we're on to six point one, Orion and Taft School presentations.
Alright, so tonight we're gonna start with Orion with Ms. Winnie Wong and her team.
Right, really excited to be the first one. Alright, we'll get started. Good evening, Board of Trustees, my name is Winnie Wong, honored to serve as a new principal of Orion School, leading two unique program on site, the Mandarin immersion program and the parent co-op program. Our Mandarin immersion program is a two-way immersion program, starting with an eighty-twenty model in TK to first grade. Students are immersed in learning Mandarin language art, science, social studies, and math, eighty percent of the day in Mandarin and twenty percent of the day in English. As they move up to fourth and fifth grade, it becomes fifty-fifty. Our goal is that all of our students are fully bilingual and bilingual. Our parent co-op program is a unique and collaborative program designed to foster a sense of community and share responsibility among parents and caregivers. We create a supportive network where parents and caregivers actively participate in educational experience of their children. Our goal is to guide our student to embrace the many culture in the world as global citizens. Tonight, my team are really excited to present to you a comprehensive overview of Orion School's academic achievement, enriching programs, diverse school event, our commitment to amplifying student voices, and the various avenue through which we actively engage with our community. So we start with our vice principal.
Thank you. Good evening, Board members, my name is Brianna Turner. And... To your computer. Thank you. Good morning, or good evening, Board members, my name is Brianna Turner and it is a privilege to serve as the vice principal of Orion School. Students at Orion have the opportunity to engage in Redwood City School District Learners Framework each day through a variety of academic and enrichment curriculum and programs. Over the summer, our teachers participated in training with the California Reading and Literature Project to deepen their understanding of the science of how our students learn to read and strengthen their reading instructional skills. Our kindergarten first and second grade teachers are using our new Hegarty Bridge to Reading Curriculum to provide their class daily systematic phonics instruction. Teachers are administering one-on-one reading assessments, including the basic phonics skills test to our primary grade students in six-week intervals. Teachers are then using this data to target phonics instruction for their students in a small group setting. Our ongoing data is showing that our focus on phonics is truly paying off as our youngest learners are making steady gains in their foundational skills with each new round of assessments. This year, our multilingual learners are receiving supplemental designated English language development instruction through our new Language Power Curriculum. Through this curriculum, students receive small group instruction and targeted support for their reading, writing, speaking, and listening skills. Our Mandarin integrated units aligns with the district's integrated units curriculum. We've crafted our Mandarin curriculum in-house with collaboration amongst our teachers, Mandarin immersion instructional coaches, and site leadership to create Read Aloud books for each integrated unit. Students further enhance their language proficiency through reading and writing. We take great pride in the instructional materials developed in conjunction with our team, some of which have even been published on Level Learning, a widely-used curriculum resource website for Mandarin immersion programs across the state of California. Students at Orion have a unique opportunity to engage in hands-on science learning through the FOSS science curriculum. Students develop collaboration skills as they participate in FOSS investigations that develop their scientific thinking skills. Students receive social-emotional learning lessons from both classroom teachers and our team of mental health counselors. We have social skills groups available on campus to support students as they learn how to make friends and resolve conflicts with one another. Students at Orion participate in a variety of enrichment opportunities each week. Each class spends time in our Makery, constructing their knowledge of science, technology, engineering arts, and mathematics. Students in all grades also have the opportunity to participate in climate science lessons in our thriving school garden several times each month. Students in our co-op program participate in parent-led art and action lessons, and students in our Mandarin immersion program receive their art lessons in Mandarin. Students in all grade levels participate in PE two times a week, and students in third, fourth, and fifth grade participate in weekly music lessons as well. We have a robust school library that students visit weekly with their class, as well as during recess and lunch, should they choose to do so. Thank you.
Alright, I'll click the next slide. Let's do it here. Here's a snapshot of the many cool and unique school events going on at Orion School. Our commitment to diversity, cultural celebrations, academic excellence, and global citizenship is reflected in a wide range of activities throughout the school year. Our Mandarin immersion program has two signature school-wide events, the Lunar New Year Celebration and the Mid-Autumn Harvest Moon Festival. Those events provide opportunity for our students to immerse themselves in rich traditions of Chinese culture, but also for the entire school community to come together in celebration. During the Lunar New Year Celebration, our students wear Chinese traditional clothes in red and yellow and perform Fan and Kung Fu dances for families and community members. They also make crafts such as paper-cutting art, red envelope, and writing Chinese calligraphy and couplet to decorate for Lunar New Year. Students get to make and enjoy delicious Chinese food such as dumplings and dessert. Last, our students sing traditional Chinese song and watch a lion dance performance to welcome the Lunar New Year. Our students also get to share what they have learned with the broader community by performing in a downtown Redwood City Lunar New Year Celebration. Next month, really exciting, on March ninth, I would like to invite all of you to come to Orion School to celebrate Lunar New Year with us. We also have the Mid-Autumn Harvest Moon Festival, which offer a wide magical evening under moonlight, cultivating a sense of unity and cultural appreciation. Our students make lanterns with rabbit and moon symbols. They perform a skate called Chang'e on the origin of Mid-Autumn Festival. They got to participate in family-friendly activities such as making bubble tea and selling mooncake to fundraise. Our parent co-op program also has two signature school-wide events, the Author-Illustrator Fair and also the Multicultural Study. The Author-Illustrator Fair brings the literary world to life. Our students get to interact with different author and illustrator to get to know, to immerse themselves in a book-creating process. The author also visits all the classrooms to reallow their books to students. The multicultural study event provide a platform for exploring and celebrating the rich cultures represented within and beyond Orion School. Our students work with their classroom teacher to vote for a country that is studied throughout the school year. Students engage in learning about geographical feature, architecture, appreciate local cuisines, music, art, and dance. Student present what they learned to their peers by hosting a travel day. These events are great at developing our students into global citizens. Throughout Hispanic Heritage Month, our students engage in lost rituals, which is led by our amazing parent volunteer, providing them with craft and reallowed to students in both Spanish and English. This deepen our students' understanding of Hispanic culture. Recognizing the importance of heritage, we also celebrate the AAPI Heritage Month and also the Black History Month with meaningful event that honor the contribution of these communities. Our students were selected to co-host the weekly morning assembly with me, presenting their writing about impactful leaders from various heritages to entire school. We also host the STEAM Fair, Maker Fun Night, and Science Olympiad to foster a love for innovation. This event highlights the scientific-engineering achievement of our student. In the second picture on the left, our students and family design a robot that automatically draw lines on paper. All of these activity collectively contribute to a well-rounded and inclusive educational experience for all of our students at Orion School. Next slide? Okay, there you go. As we reflect on a diverse school event that brings our community together, it become evident that the true strength of Orion lies in the unique perspective each student brings to the table. By elevating student voices, we foster a school where every student feel a strong sense of belonging in shaping the narrative of their own learning experience at Orion. By involving students in decision-making processes, our student council provide a platform for our leaders to express their opinions, propose ideas, and influence school policies. This school year, we have a new initiative for our leaders to co-host the weekly morning assembly with me. This increases students' involvement, empower them to develop their leadership and communication skills, provide an opportunity to showcase school spirit, celebrate achievement, and reinforce a sense of pride in being a leader at Orion School. The Author-Illustrator Fair featuring student docents is another powerful avenue for amplifying student voices. By showcasing their distinctive insight and entrusting them with the role of guiding families and their peers during the fair, our students feel a really strong sense of confidence. On the multicultural study day, students become teachers. Through their presentations, performances, and interactive displays, they actively engage their peers in meaningful conversation about cultural differences and similarities. Our students also become culture ambassadors for the Lunar New Year. They perform traditional dances, musical performances, or storytelling to the community. Additionally, our students leave interactive stations to share their knowledge of Chinese traditions with their peers. This school year, our students will also have the exciting opportunity to participate in event planning and implementation. In the second picture on the right, Redwood City Mayor Jeff G's classroom visit served as a special opportunity for our fourth and fifth grade students at Orion to directly engage with local government and community leadership. Mayor G's presence in the classroom not only exposes students to civic responsibility, but also provide a platform for them to express their thoughts and concern about the community. Our students actively participated in discussions, asked really great questions, and shared their perspective on various local issues. This school year, the student-led goal-setting conference offer yet another impactful avenue for amplifying student voices within our school. In this initiative, students actively participate in discussions about their academic progress, personal goals, and areas for improvement. It promote a sense of ownership and responsibility for their academic endeavors. The student-led food waste recycling initiative provide our leaders with an opportunity to contribute to sustainable practices within Orion. Our students actively participate in reducing our school's ecological footprint. They become advocates for environmental consciousness, fostering a sense of responsibility toward the planet. They educate their peers on the importance of reducing food waste, implementing proper recycling practices, and understanding the environmental impact of their own choices. Our school administration team listen to our students' voices and use their feedback to directly inform school decisions. For example, we talk to students of all grade level during recess and lunch and gain insight into how they feel about Orion School experience. We also conduct formal panorama survey to collect student feedback. This school year, we added opportunity for our younger grade students to provide their feedback using illustration.
Good evening, Board of Trustees, my name is Mary Bell Libara and I am the MTSS TOSA at Orion. At Orion, we are very fortunate to have a strong parent presence. Our parents are supportive, take initiative, and are truly the foundation of our school. Our parents are highly involved in our parent-teacher organization. Our PTO is made up of parents from both the Mandarin immersion and the parent co-op programs. They work collaboratively to fundraise to support many of our enrichment programs like STEAM, climate science, and art. Our parents recently started a tutoring program to support students who need additional support in math and reading. Parents have worked tirelessly to organize and staff this program. We also have Mandarin and parent co-op advisory committees. These parents meet regularly with school leaders to make decisions around program-specific initiatives. Parents are an integral part of our school site council. Parents collaborate with school members to identify ways to support our students. We ensure that our families are informed about our school by sharing bi-weekly principal newsletters. This includes upcoming events, important information, and photos showcasing our students in school. Our school leadership team hosts a monthly coffee with the principal. We also host coffees with the principal in Spanish to engage our Latino community. We share the importance of literacy with parents at Mandarin and English literacy nights. At these events, we provide parents the tools they need to support their students' learning. Orion has many parent-run activities such as a campout at the beginning of the year where families get to build community. Our dad group, BroRyan, frequently cooks delicious meals at our school events. We are grateful for our parent community for always going above and beyond to advocate for our students and to support our school. Thank you.
As I reflect my seven-year journey at Orion School, I love Orion. I'm reminding of the incredible growth and achievement we have witnessed as a community. From my early days as a teacher to the role of instructional coach, last year as vice principal and this year as the principal at Orion School, each step has deepened my appreciation for the entire community and the vibrant and nurturing environment that define Orion. I also wanna take this opportunity to thank our staff, families, and community members for their ongoing support, you really make Orion a really special place. Thank you.
Questions or comments? Who would like to start? Go ahead, Dave.
I'm so excited to have you all up here. I think, you know, I've voted with my feet, which is, I voted with my children, that I think Orion is a fantastic school and it's just great to see how much work the staff and the teachers and the administration put into the overall educational process and the extra challenges that come with doing that in multiple languages. So I think that's really superb. I was very excited, Max is now on the student council there and so that's, it's cool to have some representation there from the students. The parent population is extremely involved and that's been really exciting to see, not only on the PTO but also in the various WhatsApp groups. And just, it really creates a cohesive community. One question, Winnie, you mentioned that one of the targets was full bilingual literacy, but for many immersion, Mandarin immersion programs in particular, full Chinese literacy is not often listed as a target goal because of just the raw number of characters that are required. What are the targets of the school in terms of Chinese literacy at graduation, assuming that someone joins as a kinder?
So the requirement for like, our expectation and then like what we want the end result for our student is they will be able to pass the AP test by like, because their proficiency level is really high when comparing with like all the Mandarin immersion program across the state. We have data to show that we are really like meeting the standard of a really high-quality Mandarin immersion program and our goal is for our student to be able to continue to take AP classes. I would say like almost to intermediate level, so they're really ready and prepared to take the high school AP test. Because I used to teach also Mandarin AP classes in high school, so I can really see like, wow, I'm really confident with our students. They'll be able to pass the AP Mandarin test and also like enroll in the IB courses to take Mandarin as one of the course, essential course. So that is our goal, to be, to have our student to be able to communicate freely in China when they travel to China and they will be able to read and write.
Awesome, thank you. And in terms of being able to pass that AP exam, would that be in high school or when they graduate from Orion?
So when they graduate from Orion, like through our data, we can tell like they have met the entry requirement of like passing the AP test. But of course, they need to continue to sharpen their language skill to continue to practice and review.
I just wanna clarify for people who are on video here. We're talking about people who have just graduated fifth grade, being able to complete a effectively college-level Mandarin qualification.
Which is extraordinary.
Which is really incredible. So, so thank you for that. For, for most of the schools in the district, there's, there's a bunch of core things that we look at to assess whether students are progressing in English and math in particular. I know that Orion has got a number of benchmarks that you use for students to assess their progress with like level Chinese and the like. It would be interesting at, in some venue to get some of, to have that presented to the board in terms of how overall Orion students are progressing in their Chinese proficiency. You mentioned you're looking at some data that is encouraging, we would love to, to see that data as well. Cool, thank you so much for your presentation for all that you do, it's a wonderful school.
Thank you.
Thanks again for your presentation to all three of you. And obviously, my kids don't go to Orion, but I do have a lot of friends that have gone through still at Orion and so I have always heard such a wonderful program for having the co-op, especially, you know, before it was the Mandarin and now with the Mandarin program too that has actually bloomed and there's more students and so I do appreciate, obviously, throughout your presentation, you spoke about student voice and it seems like US are doing a lot of that, which is actually really good because we wanna get them there. So I do wanna say thank you so much for all that you guys do. I know sometimes you may not hear it, but please know that we do. I appreciate everything that you guys do, so thank you.
Alright, yeah, thanks Winnie, Brianna, and Mary Bell for coming here and presenting tonight. It was great to hear about the Mandarin immersion program and the parent co-op. I actually had a couple of questions, so I'm gonna fire off, start with those. The, on the academics and enrichment, you talked about CRLP and Hegarty. What does that look like in the Mandarin immersion?
Yes, thank you. Yes, I have worked very closely with our incredible Mandarin immersion teachers who are working very hard to understand in a second language all the nuances of teaching phonics, which is difficult for me as a native English speaker because there's so much to it. So they're doing an amazing job of providing their students, in addition to foundational literacy skills in Mandarin, also providing access to foundational literacy skills in English. And so in our lower-grade classrooms, students have the opportunity, even though they're learning Mandarin most of the day, to still get those Hegarty Bridge to Reading lessons daily and targeted small groups several times a week in English as well. It's a busy day, they have a packed schedule, but they are making it happen, which is really great. So we're making sure because we understand that in addition to acquiring these language skills in Mandarin, we do wanna make sure that all of these students are reading proficiently in English as well. So teachers are working very hard to ensure that there's access to those foundational skills in both languages.
Great, that's good, that's cool, thanks for sharing that. And then on the student voice side, I know you couldn't get to every bullet point there, but there were two I was kinda curious about, so I'm gonna ask about them. One was the empathy interviews with students. What does that look like and what sort of information are you getting out of that?
Yeah, so it is a really fun experience to talk to different students, like from both program, about the experience because like we have many good ideas like of what we want, but it is really important to ask students' voice because when we decide about what kind of enrichment classes we should offer at Orion School and then we receive feedback from a family and then I have my own idea like of what I like and just at that moment, I was like, oh, I need to ask the kid what they were really excited about and then we really need to use their voice and as reference to make decisions. So that's why I go and then I talk to student, what you enjoy the most about garden class? Why do you love STEAM? STEAM is ranked as number one in our school, at Orion School. So our instructor, Brian, is doing a wonderful job. He got our student really excited every single week about STEAM class. So that's something that I would, I mean, I collect the information and I bring it to the PTO to share with family because they are doing a lot of fundraising to support our enrichment classes. So through this empathy interview, I will be able to collect more information, not just ranking like which one is the top one, like what really make our STEAM lesson really impressive for our student and what keep them coming to school and keep them really excited in school.
Cool, that's neat. And then the other one on the student voice one was the shadow of a student. What goes on in Shadow of a Student?
Yeah, so I also really enjoy that because I mean, we're always so busy administrators and like to be able to shadow a student for a day to see like how they get started and then to see like what really, you can see, you can see in students' eyes when they're really excited about learning and then how they feel really helpful, they refer to the sentence starters and the word bank when they have like collaborative conversation pairs shared with their peers. You can see like, wow, the energy level is really going up. So like after shadowing a student for a day and really like I collect this observation data to share with our staff and you can see it in our panorama survey, our students feel, eighty percent of our students feel really excited that teachers show real interest in teaching them. And after observing and shadowing with, after shadowing a student for a day, I do see that, like why they rank that eighty percent and then I really see that in action.
Oh, good, thanks, thanks for sharing that again. No, but again, thanks for the presentation, it was exciting to hear about what's going on in Orion around academics and enrichment, student voices, school events, parent voice, and outreach, so thank you.
Great presentation, thank you so much to the three of you for being here. I love the Orion School and I was reflecting a little bit as Cecilia, you were talking about Orion that we've had for many, many years and then we had the MI strand at the former John Gill site and we merged those schools together four years ago, right? And then pretty quickly, we had COVID, which kind of was a bumpy time for everybody, to say the least, particularly for those schools that were just coming together as a community, right? And getting to know each other and building those, those bonds and everything that we know we need to be successful. And so listening to you tonight, it's like, I feel like, wow, like four and a half years later, I think we're getting to the place we wanted to be, you know, right away, which was not really, you know, that wasn't, was I gonna say that, that's, that's probably, that wasn't going to happen anyway, but then COVID really created a lot of problems. So anyway, I'm really happy to hear about the various structures that you've set in place, particularly with the parents in terms of how they're working together to support the whole school in addition to their individual programming and the nuances and the differences in the co-op and the Mandarin immersion. So I think that came through in a lot of what you talked about, where there are commonalities and where they're coming together as a school. And I know I've seen it when I've been out there and I love, you know, some of the events and celebrations that you've mentioned, I've been to all of those over the years and they're just, they're, they're amazing and I think one of the things I think about, you know, traditionally, it was always true with Orion and with MI, but coming together, the multicultural education that's happening at your school is extraordinary and I would, And I would, I would say it's probably at the top of what you see in the United States. I mean, truly, when you think about all the different cultures that the students are getting at that school and it's a real model and we should be so proud of that. And it gets me thinking that maybe we need to think about that for like a, you know, some kind of a Kent Award or a Golden Bell or something like that. So anyway, I just, you know, bells were kind of going off in my head as, as you were talking. Really happy to hear about all the student voice. I mean, it's pretty clear again, when I've gone out to the school site, the little student ambassadors that are taking you around and how knowledgeable they are about their school and what it provides to all the students. And I just want to say thank you so much to all the staff. I know the teachers and the staff and all of you work so hard to make all of this happen. It doesn't come easy and I really appreciate it. And I know we have a few on Zoom tonight. So just please, those who couldn't make it tonight, please let them know how happy we are with all that you're doing and, and really appreciate that. And then the one other thing I want to just say is I think, you know, this idea of shadowing a student for the day, what a great best practice. And I don't know if all of our principals have done that. I, great. I mean, we've talked about that over the years and I think it's eye opening. I mean, I'm so like, I think the education our kids are getting today is so much better than say 15 years ago, where I did shadow, you know, for a day and it was hard. I mean, I was so tired by the end. And there were times when frankly, it was a little bit boring, right? And hard to sort of keep the kid engaged. I think our curriculum now and what we're doing is so much more engaging. But again, I'm sure it was eye opening for you to kind of see, you know, what are those kinds of highs and lows? And, and I bet you were just exhausted coming out of that, right? That feeling of being a student for a day.
Yeah. It's one of the most like amazing memory because I, at first I'm like, oh, we have a new map curriculum. That sounds like really challenging. You have to facilitate a discussion with students. But when you're there actually being in an instruction, in a discussion, you can see students are so excited to share their strategy. They feel so proud to be able to like share their voice, their idea with other classmates and everyone is listening. So really exciting to see it in action.
Yeah, that's great. Great. Well, thank, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
So I'll echo the thanks for your presentation. It was wonderful to see. And I'll just repeat what Elisa said, particularly just how, how far Orion has come in the last four years since we've merged. I am really proud of the work that you've done and that the staff has done to make the school site as cohesive as it is now. Happy to see the parent community working well together and leading events together. And I was thinking the same thing about the multicultural education that the students at Orion are receiving. I think it's phenomenal and definitely top tier compared to what most of the rest of the country is receiving. So kudos for that. And I loved seeing all the number of student-led events that was listed, student-led, really giving them a voice and a leadership and an ownership over the events and their school. And I think that makes them more invested in their education as well. I'm looking forward to Lunar New Year event. I believe I'm free that, that day. I'm going to put it on my calendar. And then I just want to say, you mentioned Mr. Howell in the STEAM classroom. My now 10th grader had him in second grade, Henry Ford. So I know Mr. Howell and I know his passion for STEAM. And I just think he's in the element there and I'm so happy that he's your STEAM teacher there. So I think that's all I have tonight.
Well, great presentation Winnie and group. And just a little, a little background here. So when we started the Mandarin program and went out to look for those teachers that would help us bring that program to fruition. As the board knows, it, we took a year, about a year and a half to study and research and determine which manner we were going to go with Mandarin. And you were selected as, as one of the teachers. And so you went from teacher to you're an instructional coach because Catherine found your abilities to be in an area where you could not only support, but engage teachers on how the instruction of Mandarin should take place. Then from there, we got you as a VP and now you're the principal. So congratulations. That is something to be said that does not often happen, especially in an area where it's another language, a language that we have not attempted in the past. As board members know, this program was created because there was an interest in parents and not necessarily our district parents. It was outside the district that brought it to us with a previous superintendent. And during that time, it gave myself and at the time Dr. Montes, time to research what it would look like because we had seen a program that had started in Cupertino many, many years ago and went from that program to a private school that's in San Francisco, to another school that's in Fremont and determined that we would go in this direction, knowing that we needed to really put forth a program where it would encourage parents to apply and want to maintain in that program. I think what has happened over the last four and a half years, the program has grown in a manner in which not only does it supply the academics for Mandarin, but when you talk about the academics that one still needs to continue in English and done in fidelity, Brianna, as you stated, is outstanding. Mari Bell has been there since John, it was John Gill. She had a couple of people that I know as her teacher and done an outstanding job. And now in the position of an MTSS coach, what an opportunity you bring to not only the staff, but to the students and the parents, that community. The other piece that I want to mention, you did not mention this, and I think it's still happening. Aren't you presenting at CAPE?
Yeah.
Yeah. And she is presenting because it is a submission that she submitted in regard to our Mandarin program here in Redwood City. I don't know if you want to say a little bit about that?
Yeah, yeah. Because science of reading now like is a big trend, big movement. And so I'm looking, so I explore like science, science of reading and how we can integrate it into Mandarin foundational skill development. So I submitted a proposal to CAPE. So I'm feel really excited because CAPE is usually for other foreign languages. But I feel really honored like this time I can represent Asian languages to present our Mandarin immersion program to, to our community. I'm not just our community, beyond our community. It's not just in like Asian language institute, it's with all other teachers, like with all the language teachers there. So really excited. And then in, actually next week, I'm hosting a preschool tour for the NCLC conference. NCLC stands for National Chinese Language Conference, which is the highest profile conference in the Mandarin teaching industry. So I'm hosting their coordinator to come to see our Mandarin immersion program because we want to provide a school tour for our colleague in the industry to show that the great work our teachers are doing here. Thank you for bringing that up.
I, well, I wasn't going to let it go because when she asked and I said, that was great. Because normally when we go to CAPE, it's, it's all Spanish. It's for, you know, second language, Spanish learners. And so when you brought that to my attention and then you submitted and you got it, that's kudos, kudos for you. And so it shows you the manifestation of this program and where it has started from, where it was a bit rocky. I will be perfectly honest with you, it was a bit rocky. I remember going to those night meetings, parent meetings and being facilitated by an outside facilitator so that we could get this off the ground. And I'm sure Mari Bell remembers and so do you Winnie. But look where it has come to now. So kudos to all of you and thank you so much and the teachers and other staff members at Orion. You know, you have done an outstanding job. So thank you. Really appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your support as well.
So next, next we have David Camarena will be presenting for TAFT.
Hi, everybody. Let me make sure this is working. Okay, yes. Good evening, Board of Trustees. How are you doing? Hope you had a great new year. I know I did. Before I get started, I just want to say first and foremost, I want to just thank the staff who's out there watching. I want to thank my partner, Cagno Ariano, and everybody who I've been working with. I want to thank the students at TAFT and the parents. I've been welcomed there. It's been quite a transition for me. You know, I did high school, I did middle school and I'm at elementary school. So I figured I have little kids at home so I could, you know, do K to pre-K, pre-K, five A. So for you, I'm sure you know, but I just want to state for the record that we, we have various programs at, at TAFT. So without further ado, get started. So, so we know is we do have CDC onsite. Okay. So our pre-K students who are special education pre-K students, we have about three cohorts. One of them is an inclusion classroom and they join the CDC program every morning, Monday through Thursday. And it's quite an interesting thing because what we're doing there is we're bridging two worlds so that, you know, the students who are in special education pre-K are now being included with our CDC. So Ms. Ariano and I go down over there and visit and hang out and play, you know, blocks and things with those kids. So when I asked folks for pictures, I had so many. I didn't, it was hard to choose all these great pictures that I put up. So and you see on the bottom right, we have somebody down there playing bowling and that's from our pre-K class. So, and I asked them what they were accomplishing and they were really happy that they were working on five motor skills, numbers, colors and play base social skills. And that is important for us, especially as I see it as a father of a three and a five-year-old because, you know, a lot of these kids are going to feed into TAFT. So we want to make sure that we get them prepared and as they get into our TK and then pre, and then kindergarten. In addition to our pre-K and CDC, we have our specialized learning center and our therapeutic learning center. And those classrooms, you know, they have a wide array of, of, of challenges, but it's, it's been fun. I get a lot of hugs, a lot of hugs, a lot of high fives every morning. And one of our, one of the things that we do at TAFT, and I don't like having any meetings at eight o'clock because that's when I open the gate and Ms. Ariano goes to the back and I give everybody a high five as they walk in. So that's really important to me because it sets the tone for the day. I've noticed that if I'm not there in the morning and I show up later for whatever reason, and sometimes it can get a little ram punches. But the kids are, they're great and they, they do that. So, but we have a lot of things going on at TAFT. There's a ton of things. And you know, moving from Kennedy to TAFT, I figured it might be a slower paced environment. No, it's not. Okay. Because like I said, we have a lot of programs there and it's, it's quite a, for me, it's been a great learning experience. And I'm super thankful for the staff who has, and the parents and the students who have accepted me because it's not easy when you have such a great person who is leading and then had a big, had a few big shoes. But it's been, it's been working and we've been following all of the district mandates in terms of our math and our ELA. So it's been working. The buy-in at our, at our school has been immense. Our teachers have put in a ton of work. They're doing their centers. IM, Illustrated Math, has been a challenge, has like every other school, but they've embraced it. Some teachers like it. Some people like it more than others, but it's been, it's been, it's been, it's been a good, good start. And we're halfway through the year and, and we see folks that are being more and more in terms of they're more savvy with it, they're more familiarized, they feel a lot more confident. So we're really happy about that. We have our CRLP and our Hegarty going also in, in ELA. And, and we have a strand of 50/50. So we do have 50/50 bilingual and then that goes from K to third and then fourth and fifth, they do all English. But so we do have two tracks. So we do, we're monitoring that. And we do a lot of, we actually been using a lot of data dives recently in our, in our faculty. And I've made teachers, thank you teachers who are out there listening, complete their data reflection sheets, which is important for us to be looking at that data as we try to get our scores up. We have a nice STEAM room. It's, we use every single room at our school and our teacher is doing a great job of providing STEAM sessions, lessons every, every week to every class. So all students make the trek. It's upstairs and they walk up there and even the little kindergartners get up there and, and, and we're using our, our, our STEAM room. And they're learning a lot of different things. They're, they're, we have Legos, coding, Maker Space. And then also our STEAM teacher is helping out with some AFAS. So she's also going to be doing some integrating units in that portion. So that's going to be important for us to consider looking at and looking how, how we improve. Our third grade went to MSI. I know MSI Marine Science Institute because at Kennedy, the sixth graders go and knew it. So the, it was nice to see our third grade folks, our third grade teachers put a request to go do that field trip. So that was granted. And so we're doing a little bit of that there. Our ELA folks in fourth grade, I asked what they thought was a celebration for them. And they told us that they've been working on opinion and narrative writing. So, and they're making progress there. So we're excited about that. And for our, our kindergartners, I asked what are some of the challenges, celebrations that you've been having? So, you know, we have an English track and we have a Spanish track, but everybody's learning their syllables in both languages. So that's, that's important because especially in our, in our Spanish track, you know, we have our teacher who's, she's doing a little bit of Spanish. She does a lot of Spanish instruction and she also has to do some English instruction. So, you know, she's teaching some phonics and they're, they're actually all the curriculum that's been provided to us. They've been using it with fidelity. So we're excited about that. So we have a lot of specials happening. We have PE, STEAM, like I mentioned, art and music. And so we have our for music for minors, which does K through two. And then we have our wonderful Julia Ferico Youngs, who's been with us for a while and she does a virtual for the third grade through fifth grade. So it's, it's, it's busy. It's busy at TAFT with all our electives. I don't want to say like the special, sorry, that's my high school and middle school. One of the things that we have promoted and thank you to Ms. Ariano for this is the art piece that Ms. Lawson asked for. We actually have a bulletin board now on the front office. So we put together a spreadsheet and our teachers are signing up to put their students work in. So as I say, you walk in, you'll be able to see that. And that bulletin board, we also use it for like Dia de los Muertos and African American Month is coming up. So we're going to put something up there too. So we want to make sure that as parents walk in, we're showcasing, you know, diversity and our, and our student art and by work. We have a great mental health team. We have one full-time lead counselor who's part of the district and then we have three partners and all of them are busy. All of them are working, doing their work. We check in regularly and they're providing some good feedback. Previously, we had a changing perspectives curriculum that was purchased and that's being used. So what happens with that is the lead mental health counselor, Ms. Lauren Abrams, has created a schedule where she is doing a rotation. So she has visited already at the beginning of the school, while the first half of the year she did seven classes. And now she's in the second rotation and then she's going to come back to those seven and keep it going. And during that time, she's providing lessons so that in classroom, while they're having their seven week break, they're still doing some type of ACL in the classroom. We have lunch bunch and friend groups. So we have social groups so that kids can learn some, you know, social skills and that's happening regularly as well. And that's a lot of what's happening in our academic piece. So we're really excited about what's doing. We do look at our data regularly and we are excited about what we see. We're making growth and TAFT is a place that, that has a lot of potential. And I'm excited to be there and I'm hoping to just keep it pushing there. So. Our student life, student life is fun. It's, the kids there are great. They're amazing. And like I said, I get hugs and high fives. Before at Kennedy, I never got any of that. So I got other stuff at Kennedy, you know, because I was a disciplinary in there. But anyway, that was another time. But here at TAFT, it's, it's fun. It's fun. It's good to see kids having fun, excited. Teachers care about our kids. We have a student council. They're going to help us with the Great Kindness Challenge that's coming up, the 22nd to the 26th. So we're going to make posters about that and post them all over campus. Thank you to Ms. Ariano regarding student council. So she decided it would be a good idea for parents to watch their students give their, their, the presentation online. So we created a link and we set some time aside in the morning and how many people showed up? A good 40, 50, right? Yeah, it was a lot. And that was the parents whose kids were running for office, right? So it was, it was, it was a great thing to do and some of them missed it, but you know, sometimes you have glitches and, you know, but it was, it was fun. And it was cute to see the kids go up there and write their speech, well, say their speech. So that was good. We had Spirit Week, thanks to student council. We had that famous, nothing but a backpack day. So you see the tamal pot or, you know, the baby carriage and things like that. So that had not been done, I guess, at the elementary level there. So we were just, I, we saw it at Kennedy, which is, it was just fun to see them walk in with all these different bags or whatever it is that there was. So that was. or whatever it is that there was. So that was, that was fun. We are actually in the midst of doing our pancake breakfast for, planning it anyway. I think they assigned me what to do cleanup, right? I'm the one who's doing the cleanup. So that's going to happen in February. So folks, February tenth is our pancake breakfast. Don't miss it. Okay, write that down because we expect to see all board members there and cabinet members. Okay, so eating pancakes with our students. Those are fifth grade outdoor ed fundraisers. So we have forty-six kids going. That's about two thirds, a little over two thirds. So that's exciting. One of the things that came up through MTSS, and again, thank you to Ms. Ariano for putting this together. She got together with Ms. Betty Mongen and Ms. Robin Porter and they created the cutest PBIS school procedure video. So two fifth graders and two second graders created us a video. They put it together and we actually showed it, this, we had our student assembly back on Tuesday. I was going to wait till Friday, but it was like, no, because you know, after two weeks, kids forget and all this. I was like, no, let's go ahead and do it. So we put it together, thank you to Robin Porter and Ms. Betty Mongen. They sent me the link and, and it just has the kids showing them, this is what you do when you go to the cafeteria. Grab and sit down and they talk about like, you go to the bathroom right away and you go back to class. And then you, and the gate opens eight o'clock, you go to the back. It's the cutest thing and we showed it to all the, all the students. So in our assemblies we have, we'll do K through two, K second, like one twenty minute session. And then right after that, we do the upper grades. Because I don't know, we've putting them together, it might just, it might not, it might not, you know, little ones get antsy and I could talk to the older ones a certain way and I can do that same for the K two. So the panorama survey gave us some good results. As you could see there, the students are happy. They, we are kind and respectful. So that's great. The teachers care about them and they say we do fun stuff for them, which is great. One day I went and got ice cream, October fifth, and just handed out ice cream because it was hot and people loved it. And they ate it right after lunch. Okay. So that was like their dessert. So that was nice. You know, we have a dolphin ticket raffle. So it's part of our PBIS. And every Friday, I have the teachers, they have a box where they put their dolphin tickets in and it's for the traits of be safe, be respectful, be a problem solver. And what's the fourth one? Ms. Ariano, you don't know what the fourth one is? Be kind. Yes, thank you. And sorry, my apologies for that. But anyway, so we, we, we did every Friday. So they, we have a box and the teachers drop off their, their tickets, right? And at nine o'clock, Mr. Camarena with your weekly Friday raffle and we call them down and the whole school hears it. And then sometimes Ms. Ariano will be having ELAC and they, they have to hear it, you know, because it goes to the whole school. So here come all the kids and the counselors there for a while and now they're busy, but they would like make a little like walkway where like they give them high fives. So the kids are really excited about it. And you know, we give them little trinkets, you know, just like pencils, sharpened dolphin emblems and they love it. They love it. They, they, they can't get enough of it. And so we, we like that, that, you know, kids are really excited. They come with a big smile every last Friday of the month and they get a free dress day. We also have students involved in our community school advisory council. So as a community school, we were offered a grant that we took, we're taking, we're participating in. And so the grant, the grant, and the grant, we have to include parent voice and student voice. So in this community school advisory council, we have students who are serving on it. And we have our actual, every month, we have a meeting where, and led by our community school coordinator, Justin Ariaga. And so we're getting a lot of student and parent voice involved there. And we're working on getting folks into the LCAP advisory committee and we're just going to keep trying to get, you know, students to enjoy their time at TAFT. It's, it's a really cute place. And thank you, Mr. Walls, you came and saw us. Yeah, he came and visited and he got to see our assembly on that Friday. So thank you for that. Our parent voice and outreach, as a matter of fact, I have a principal's coffee tomorrow. So if you're free from eight forty-five to nine thirty, come on down. I'll have coffee and donuts for you. If you see that picture there with the monster there, that was Halloween. We partnered with Subaru Carlson and they brought four cars. Was it four? Three, four? I can't remember. And they had, we made a parade for the kids. And they loaded it up with candy and they were, they're willing to do it again every year with us. So we're going to be excited about that. My, you folks get my, my weekly newsletter, bi-weekly newsletter. I hope you have some fun times reading that. That's important for parents to know. I have gotten good remarks from parents. Communication is in clear and clean and I appreciate that. Sometimes I joke that I might be sending them a little too many messages, but hey, you know. And I use, I use the blackboard text feature because I know sometimes they don't read my emails. As you could see there, we get some good, some good comments about how we treat our kids and our parents are excited. And again, there are a lot of them come in the morning and drop their kids off. So I'm out there visible and sometimes there's a little trash and I grab a broom and I'll be sweeping out there just to make it look nice and clean. But the parents are really nice for our, for Thanksgiving, that break, right before that break, we asked for donations so that we could have like a Thanksgiving breakfast for the staff. And what did we have? We had tamales, we had hot cocoa, we had tole. It was great. The teachers loved it. Now, so that was right before Thanksgiving. That was our way of saying thanks. Again, staff out there who's watching, thank you for your hard work. We're continuing, we have ELAC, which will happen on this Friday. I have my student SNC side council that happens monthly. We're working on attendance. So attendance is a big issue, at least at our school where we're trying to promote attendance to be frequent and, you know, regular. We are working with something called the Student Engagement and Student Plan, which is a SES plan. And so what we do is we have a quite a robust method of checking attendance via Power School and something else called A2A, which is Attention to Attendance. And we look at the data and we really look at who's been out and why. And as a matter of fact, today we looked at all the folks who have been late and tardy for since semester two and I sent a Robo call and a text reminding parents to try to make it there. So we're working on getting everybody involved. And again, parents are appreciative of that and very, we're open, open door policy. So they come in and ask questions about how to get better with, you know, just overall school life. We are planning on having a steam and math night sometime in the spring. More details to follow on that. And we've had a good turnout for parents volunteering on field trips. So we've had a number of field trips and especially in the fifth grade, we had a number of parents who came out. So if any of you want to volunteer and be a chaperone, by all means. And we, you know, we've had our typical back to school night. We, the goal setting conferences worked. A lot of folks gave us some good feedback, actually presented and I, I won my back to school, I won my principal's coffee. I asked parents what they liked about it and what they did not. So it was a forum, open conversation. They said they really liked the one that, that time, that one to that FaceTime that, you know, they haven't, obviously after COVID, it was a little limited. But it, parents were excited about being included in, in the process of making goals for their students. And then a fourth and fifth grade parent, teachers, I had the kids there going over their goals. I sat in a couple of them, those conferences. So it was, it was quite, it was very nice to see all that. And I am partnering with, we are partnering, excuse me, with the YMCA. We're going to start Project Cornerstone. It's a, it's a series of workshops for, for parents. So that would be something that I actually talked to them prior to the break. And I'm going to start making decisions on what type of workshops we're going to be providing parents. And I want to work with our mental health counselor with that and also with our community school coordinator to see how we can, you know, raise parent voice and get them involved. And we feel, we, we feel that if we give parents opportunity, yes, we do have a vast majority of our parents are working one or two jobs, two or more jobs sometimes. And, but we want to be able to give them opportunity to be active in their student life. And TAFT is a great place. It's a great little place and the parents there, they, they want, they want the best for their children. So. And we have, at the community school, we have a ton of partnerships. We, it's a busy place. It's a busy place. So we, we, we actually, I'm looking at college advisory prep and it's just the college advisory prep that we have to, it's us. So they come in and they do tutoring for, for after school program. So we were looking at some of the data with Leila, who's the founder and the director there. And we saw that some students needed some help with ELA. So they were typically working on math, but now they actually have one group working in ELA. And they recently asked for the second round, the second diagnostic of I ready. So we're going to be sharing that information with them and we'll be looking to see if things are moving in the right direction. We, our Boys and Girls Program and our PAL Program, they're good partners. They've been there for a long time and they're really open and they, they work with us. There's a lot of kids enrolled there. I was looking at the roster today as a matter of fact, and it's over a hundred fifty plus with both programs. So and every single room mostly is being used at TAFT for, for some type of after school. We are partnering also with Menlo Math. And this was a partnership that was, went dormant after the pandemic, but we're going to bring that up again. We're trying to, we're trying to work with those kids that are already on campus, but we also want to provide of those, because not every, out of the three hundred and seventy-five or so kids that are there, about two thirds stay for an after school program. So we try to get our pullout of those kids because they're already there. But we're trying to figure out what can we do for those kids who want tutoring, but go home right away. So we gotta, we're thinking about adding some of those kids into Menlo Math. And Menlo Math, if you're not aware of that, it's through Menlo School and they bring high schoolers to come down here and tutor kids. And we are partnering with Healthy Cities Tutoring. And we actually met with them. They do more one-to-one, but what's happening, where we met with Georgien prior to the break is they're also wanting to help with ELA reclassification. So we looked at today, as a matter of fact, I pulled, I did a cross-reference check of all the kids in, in our ELA, I mean, in our PAL and BQBC program. And then I looked at who hasn't reclassified because they, they want to be able to help with the, put more support there so that we could get some reclassification going. And we had our holiday gift program that was a success. A lot of families came and there's some pictures there that happened right before the break. And we have the, you know, the normal safety net services backpack uniforms. We refer families. Today we found out about certain families, sent them over to the family center and we're trying to support them. And our mental health continues. We have mental health happening actually in the after school program as well, Una Vida. So one of our counselors there, Ms. Kim, she works throughout the day. She also works in the after school program to provide mental health support. And that's pretty much it for my report. Do we have any questions?
Thank you, from your paisana.
Yes.
I was actually looking up, because I was like, how do you say paisana in English?
Your compatriot.
Yes, so as an English learner, I didn't know what to have to say. So I was looking it up, but I was like, okay. So his parents are from the same state. Yeah, from Chiwawa. So anyway, I want to say thank you for your presentation. Thank you for everything that you're doing. Obviously, I got to see you as a parent at Kennedy and you as a vice principal. Definitely your personality. I was going to say, when you talk about the students hugging you and giving you high fives and all that, I got to see that too when I visited TAFT last year when Anna was there. And I want to say is the only school that I've seen actually kids kind of more loving with the principal. So I think it might be the community at TAFT, perhaps thanks to Anna.
Yeah, she went and there was, everybody came and hugged her.
Yeah, really like.
I was like, what about me?
And so I also too think that your personality might just, you know, kind of shift them a little and maybe, then going back to your Kennedy days, I, I used to love hearing during the pandemic, your, here's Mr. Camarena with your daily news or whatever. And so I think that brings up whether you're a principal or an actual teacher. Again, if you want the kid to be engaged, you need to be friendly to a certain extent because you need to be stern when you need to be. But I do think that people's personality, just like Winnie was talking about, I think that's what makes the student feel comfortable. So I do appreciate that about you. And so, and I appreciate hearing you that you thought TAFT was going to be kind of easy, but no, it's a lot of work.
Every, every school is.
And so I do want to tell you, I, I appreciate everything you said. Obviously, there's so much. When you talk about, you know, you partnering with YMCA and Cornerstone and talk about parents' voice. And obviously, we do know unfortunately, there are a lot of our parents that have, have it tough. Like you said, some of them have probably more than two jobs. It's hard. And again, how do you as a parent, especially when you're working so hard, help that student, right? When, I mean, it takes me back to my English days. When coming into a new country, learning a new language, it's so hard. And yet you don't really have the support of your parent, even though yes, they're there. But how can they help you when they don't even know the language sometimes, right? So I, I think it's tough and I also think that we do have to realize that's the one thing that we have to think about. Some of our kids struggle, but there's very reasons, important reasons why. So anyway, I, I do want to say thank you for everything that you're doing. You know, like you said, obviously all parents care for their students, just like Orion and all the other schools that have presented. Student voice you also mentioned. I mean, obviously, we, we have been hearing student voice for, for a long time throughout the district. And I, I think we are blessed as board members to have the staff we have, whether just here at the district office or at the school sites. Because you guys do, the teachers do a lot of the work and the paraprofessionals and office staff that work there. Again, I think it's a big community and I think that makes Redwood City such an important place. I do feel that obviously all parents, like whatever school they go to, you know, they're unique in a certain way. So with that said, I will go ahead and pass it on to my colleagues. So thanks again.
You're welcome.
Everything.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Really appreciate your efforts, the efforts of your, your administration, your staff and your teachers. It's great to see all the effort and there's, there's also a lot of work that, that needs to be done here in the, in the school. Couple of different questions for you. My understanding, is there, there's not a PTO currently at TAFT? There used to be, but there's not now?
Yes, and I'm not sure how long ago that was. I imagine it was about four or five years ago.
Are there things that we can do to help facilitate the, encourage the creation of a PTO to get parents more involved?
You come visit and on a, you know, on a principal's coffee and talk about, you know, creating a PTO. It's there. I mean, last, I want to say the principal's coffee in December had twenty-five, thirty parents.
That seems.
You know, but they talk about it, you know, how about like, let's get together. But it's, for some, for whatever reason, maybe it might be like they work or, you know, they just, it's been, it's, they'll donate and they'll help with food and things of that sort. But yes, that would be a task to take on. It would be something that I would require help because.
And you are correct. Anna, Anna struggled with it also and it was created, it was started, but there were some issues that came about. And we met with our attorney and so forth. And it is different, it's a different community. And as Cecilia has alluded to and spoke about it quite openly, it's difficult when you have a community that is working, parents are working two, three jobs. Their main, their main concerns right now are the putting a roof over their heads and putting food on the table and getting their kids to school. The rest is all, a lot of commotion where they feel that's not where they want to put their energy at this point in time. So we even, and Anna can speak to this a lot better than I can. When she went to TAFT, there was an outside person who wasn't even a parent at the school that was trying to create the PTO, but we had some issues. And I think when you're not a parent at the school site, living in those types of conditions and trying to create something out of the ordinary that they're not accustomed to. It's not easy and you're trying to push something. So. I think we could probably try something similar, but. As a person of experience of working on the east side for many years, and no, I did not have a PTO. I had a really great site council that helped, but to provide me with what PTOs. Around the district were doing, that was not going to happen, so I was not going to push it, but I wanted them there. For the school site council, I wanted them to participate in ELAC. And I wanted to participate in the different activities that were happening at the school sites and that I got. Great. I didn't have the monies that my counterparts, my other colleagues in the districts had and wanted them, but. I had the parents there that really. Number one, appreciated what the staff was doing. And number two, were really grateful for the education that their kids were getting and would support us in a manner that they could and which they did.
Thank you for that feedback.
Well, I think when it comes to a PTO, I mean, I worked a lot trying to really work with the people we have. Um, I think one of the most difficult parts of a PTO is all the legalities, right? The documentation. When you really look at that part, it's a difficult part. I mean, I learned a lot. I I learned more than I ever wanted to know. And I was on a PTA when I was a parent that. Being learned about PTO and all of the bylaws, it was a lot of technicalities and that's very difficult for a lot of parents. Because it's not something they're accustomed accustomed to. So we continued, we had teachers, we had our librarian, we had different people taking on the role. It was very difficult to maintain when you don't have the parents. But it was, but we were trying to fill in because of the technical parts, the accounting part. You know, the taxes, we learned more than, and I have to say, the teachers and Elsa, who was our coordinator, we learned more than we ever wanted to know how to get. Understanding how to support the system, but it's a very difficult system for a community that is not knowledgeable in those areas. So what we learned is we relied on other people to help us balance things out. And I have to say, one of the Clifford parents actually supported us and helping us. Making sure we were in compliance with all of the state laws and that was cumbersome. It took us two years to do that. So it's just, it's a process that our community just can't do. Um, and so we did focus on all of the other parts. How do we build the community? How do we engage them in all these outside activities? And they do show up. They definitely show up, but they don't show up in the leadership part. They're very. It's, it's just one of these things where they're not comfortable with it yet. But again, Taft is changing. There's a lot of, you know, the the diversity is coming about very different. So maybe in the future, those will be, you know, things that will come about as the community is changing around it. But the parents are always really, really involved and want to be part of it.
Awesome. Thank you. I really appreciate the color. When, when we had synced last and heard more about Taft previously, one of the things that we had heard about was some transportation issues for kids at this school. I I would just love your temperature on, do you feel like that's still a major problem? Do you feel like things are getting worse on the transportation front or better?
I don't think transportation is really that big of an issue, you know. I mean, there was that time where folks were being given transportation last year and the year prior. But for the most part, I mean, we have kids who moved to a different part of town and they still want to stay at Taft, but then that could be challenging, but it's, it's not a. It's, I don't think it's one of those issues that that's, you know. Taking over, you know, so it's, kids are still going to school. We, we do have certain number of kids who are chronically absent and things of that sort. Tardy, so we're targeting that, but it's. Very rarely does a topic of transportation come up, does it? Yeah, so it's other factors. So she works on our attendance review team and. During our SESPs and things of that sort, it, transportation has been an issue. It's been other things that are making kids not come to school.
Thanks. It, I I really like that there's, there's a clear focus on attendance, on using systems like A to A. Uh, when we had previously talked about attendance at Taft, it had been mentioned that uh home visits were less effective than than hoped. Uh, you mentioned doing robocalls and the like. Do we have a way of of measuring these different interventions and seeing whether they're effective? And whether we need to explore new interventions for trying to resolve absenteeism?
Well, you know, usually when I send out some form of communiqué about attendance, it'll improve for a bit and then. But then it goes back, but we find it, it's typically the, I wanted the same, the same group that will, you know. And we'll work with them and 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 we haven't got to the point of home visits yet. We haven't got there because we, it's, it hasn't been required, but. We're going through the steps that the district has given us, following the SESP and things of that sort. So we've had two and we've closed those and we're gonna have another one soon. But it, it's just something that we just gotta keep trying to push and and figure out. We do look at, like, again, I like Power School. I, I, I feel like I know how to use it very well. I did the master schedule for Kennedy and I know how to do attendance. And so I also like to use Blackboard and I'm really well with that. And then A to A, I'm kind of familiar with how it works. So I blend all that together and we were actually in our front office meeting this morning and we're looking at all this and. Next thing you know, I have the seventy five plus kids who need to be attended. I should organize in a way and it's shut out today, so. I have the resources. It might be, it's a good idea to just. Take what you're saying and like, let's see, does this work or does not? You know what I mean? Because that's something that I'm not doing regularly. I'm doing it in here, but whether I'm sitting down and like, no, this, they work though. But we do have records of who we communicated to, what we've done because it's there, you know, we have it via Blackboard or we have it via email or. And that, we find that a lot of times that, we've had a couple of students and who's attendance has improved because we've. I think after trimester one, we sent out a, right? We looked at the attendance data and I sent out. Another one saying, hey, during trimester one, blah, 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 blah. And then we figured again, just after the break, because you know, after a two week span of not coming to school, you might. See some kids just be at home still, so we decided it'd be a good idea today, as a matter of fact, to send out another communiqué on attendance and just targeting those families. You know, so and there's a way to do that via Power School.
Awesome, awesome. We, we obviously rolled out a whole bunch of new curriculum in in math and English and ELD. Um, I'm wondering if you're seeing some early signs in your school in Taft of whether the new curriculum is is landing well. Uh, with the teachers and with the students.
It's a mixed bag, but they're doing it, right? They're, they're doing it. It's, she came and she saw math all day. And, and there's one teacher who I went in there to observe and she, she did math. This was October and she wasn't afraid to, and I was like, okay, well. And you know, it's, it's, it's working. I mean, folks are doing what they need to be done. It's the centers. Everybody talks about math centers being like one of the more. Familiarized places where they feel more confident in it, but and then CRLP and Hagerty, there's just a lot. And so. It's like your trial, you, you have a trial run, right? You're doing what you can and we're hoping that. We get data and opinions from folks and feedback and then see how hopefully gets better for next school year. I, in terms of checking my data with our data, excuse me. We are seeing some growth from trimester one to trimester two in both, in both math and and NELE. So that's not a lot, but it's, I, I, I look at the projected growth on I ready and I look and also, you know, we got a nice worksheet. Um, that has all the data, so I tend to look at all that and we share with our staff. We share with our staff. I made everybody. Thank you, staff, to complete their little, because I wanted them to look at the data and it's also important for them to see like. What it is that they're doing, is it paying off? So all that ties together and they're, they are following through on the curriculum set forth by the district.
Awesome, awesome. Thank you so much for, I, I know it's a lot that we we put on you all, so thank you for executing on that. We, we hope to see the, the results, that it's, it's not effort for nothing, that we're, we're gonna see.
It's not.
Results pay off with the students. I was psyched to hear about the student led plans and that it sounds like that, that went well, so.
Can you, I'm sorry?
Oh, just the student driven learning plans, having.
Oh, the goals.
The goal settings.
Oh, yes, yes. So we, I sat and interpreted several.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you know, especially in fifth grade and the teachers did a good job of putting their, their, their goals together, so. And the parents that I talked to in, uh, because that happened in October, so in my November principal's coffee, I asked parents like, what'd you think? Did you like it? Did you not? What could be changed? And this was a formal conversation, an informal conversation and. They were like, this was, there was something that was good to them because they, nobody ever asked them. That's right. What do you want to do, right?
Yeah.
Which kudos to you folks, Dr. Baker and all that, to putting that together, because they. I think at the first, at the beginning, people were like, oh, it was new, but if you talk to a mom or dad at my school. Every single one of them said, yes, they attended anyway. So it was, you know, it's good because it gives them own, you know, ownership and like, they're, it's more of a part. Thought partnership and that's what we do. That's what we do. So and that's what we're trying to get it. Taft is a great place. It's got a lot of potential and it's, I'm excited about it.
That is fantastic. Thank you. Last question for you. I know I'm a little long.
It's okay.
That, when, when I went and toured about a year ago, there were a couple of different furniture issues. Um, with furniture being the wrong size and the like, I just want to make sure that that, that all got sorted out and.
There's no furniture issues now.
Okay, that's a good sign.
Why don't you come visit us sometime?
Okay, you got it, sir. Thank you so much for your presentation. Really appreciate it.
All right. Well, thank you very much for your presentation. It was a lot for you to do solo, so usually.
No, no, no.
Yeah, well, I mean, you spoke though the whole time, so I just wanted to say thank you for that, because a lot of times there'll be, you know. Three or four people speaking to us, so you're up there with support. Um, so anyway, thank you for the presentation and I do want to just say thank you so much to, to both of you. And then also just all the teachers and staff at Taft. I think, you know, we've talked a little bit about the support that the students and the families need in the community. And I know that the school is a real hub of support. I mean. I would say that that's probably where those families are getting the most support they're getting in our community, right, is the school. And so we know how important that is for their wellbeing and just their education. So thank you. Uh, so much for all of that. And I was thinking, you know, kind of on the PTO, for me, that's less important than really just. Having the parents engaged, supporting their students at home, coming to school when they can. I love that you're thinking about different ways to engage them, like when the student presentations were going on, they could come in virtually. They couldn't be there in person. I mean, that's brilliant because a lot of times someone could take, you know, fifteen minutes or a half an hour to do that. But it's hard to sort of travel to the school if you're working your jobs and stuff like that. So thank you for thinking about those opportunities. And then, you know, the principal's coffees to get twenty five or thirty people at any of those, I think is a really good showing. Um, that says a lot and I think there's ways to convey information. I love that you're going to be working with the YMCA Project Cornerstone. I know that's been really successful at some other schools. And, um, you know, I know Familia Zunidis has also done a lot of support for Taft families. I think any of those kind of programs where parents can feel supported and have a place to ask their questions and feel like you're working as a team together is so important. So, so anyway, just thank you for all the different ways you're doing that. I think it's really great. I also really appreciate the focus on attendance. We know if students aren't in the classroom, then they're not learning, right? And so it's so important and it, you know, as much as we can do for those families that are, or the students who are consistently chronically absent, we've got to get them in school. And, you know, through your communiques or however you can do that, so important. Um, thank you for all the supports, like with the college advising prep, all the after school, I mean, really thinking about supporting. Uh, the students on a, on a longer day. And then finally, I just want to say, because I, you know, both of your schools got pretty big upgrades with Measure T.
Yeah.
And I know when I've been out there to see those new facilities, a lot of the things you're talking about with the libraries, the steam maker spaces, all of that. That's a result of the bond money. And so I once again, just want to thank the community for saying yes to upgrading our schools. It is so important. And I know it makes, I see all the heads nodding, makes such a difference to the people who work in them, to our students who get to learn in them. And I think we need to honor that and remember that, you know, you guys are in these amazing spaces now that are really making a difference to students, so.
We're using them too.
Yay, I know, I love it. I love it. I mean, you know, again, ten years ago, we did not have steam and maker spaces. And that was not happening. We didn't have the facilities to do that sort of thing. So anyway, super exciting. So thanks a lot.
You're welcome.
Yeah, thanks, David. Thanks, Karina, for being here and thanks to all your staff for, for the work that you're doing. Taft is a great place. Um, and thank you so much for hosting me a few weeks back. It was, it was wonderful to see it in action. You know, you hit most of the, most of the questions that I was gonna have, just from having looked at the slides before, I really wanted to hear about. Just all the programs that are going on at Taft and you covered it right at the beginning, the CDC with the inclusive group. The Specialized Learning Center, Therapeutic Learning Center, Fifty Fifty Program. Uh, just, there's a lot going on and the campus just hums, you know, it's, at least when I was there, it felt like it was just moving along really well. It was kind of vibrant and really cohesive. I, I enjoyed it. I also wanted to hear about a little bit about, I think you called them specials. I would have called them electives too.
Yeah.
Yeah, specials, yeah. And so it's just neat to hear about the different music programs and offerings and how that's happening and putting that in there. Uh, and then I did have one question about mental health. I'm glad that we have the district provided counselor and the partners there as well. Is it meeting the need? Is there a waitlist? Is it, you know, is it, are the groups too big? Like, how's that?
I kind of knew that question was gonna come up. So eighty two SCL lessons using changing perspective have been done. Um, seventy two students have received individual group therapy and we've had three hundred and fifty informal check-ins on topics such as conflict resolution, period relationships and emotional regulations. It's, there's a lot of work, but those girls are completing the time and I appreciate that. It's. It's getting done. It's, but the work will never stop there. Okay, but it's, we're excited with it. The kids have a way, you know, come and check in and the system there is. Robust and we check in with Lauren regularly and we, we bounce ideas off each other and it's. There, there's always gonna be mental health support, but it's, it's working for us and they're building billboards out there and. And it's, it's, it's working. So we're. We, and especially because we are able to support the kids during the after school program. So one of our counselors who works with us all day, she works another three hours in the after school program, so. But, you know, we have our group sessions, we have our one to one sessions and then we have a lot of informal check-ins who, and then we have our screen team that. We have a system where we, we put in the referral, whether it's through a staff member or a parent. And, and then we do our screen team, married to weeks and we identify kids there as well.
Great. Thanks for sharing that. And actually, you mentioned the after school programs. It's great to hear that two thirds of the students. I think are able to take advantage of an after school program that's there and how it's really weaving in with the school day. It sounds like, at least to me, that it's weaving in a lot more with the, with the school day. Mental health, as you mentioned, going throughout it, but it sounds like also. I think you'd mentioned about Healthy Cities Tutoring coming in and looking at some of the after school data and trying to focus on students that need reclassification. It'd be interesting to see how that works out. Hopefully we see.
Yeah, that's in the beginning station. Yeah, she came in, Georgianne, Maureen, who is the direct executive director, and she had this idea and. And she has, her son goes to Menlo School, so they're gonna have those kids come in. So we're in the, that's, because we, they do one to one. But sometimes that's hard. And so she's just trying to think outside the box.
Great. I'm looking forward to see how that is. And Taft was something we'd heard about last year too, being really, having really positive influence. So hopefully we're finding that that's still having a positive influence.
Yeah, for them, I had, I asked that they do a diagnostic in the beginning and now in the middle and then again the end, because we want to also see if the program is working.
Yeah, great. A lot going on. Great place. Thank you. And I'm surprised that this is your first elementary. Time in elementary. It really seemed like, you seem like a seasoned professional by the time.
Well, I'm seasoned.
Seasoned professional for elementary school, so thanks.
This is gonna be my last rodeo, folks. I was just kidding.
Thank you so much for your presentation. I'm sure it was not easy giving a presentation in a school that you haven't been at for very long, so I appreciate that.
It was, great people were there.
Yeah.
It made it that much easier.
Um, on your first slide, you have a, a photo of a student in hypotherapy, the, the student on the horse. Is that what Joe Lansdowne? The.
So that's our specialized learning center, so I've done it already twice.
Okay, I just, I think it's fantastic. It's such an amazing therapy, both physically and emotionally for the students.
Yeah.
Um, to build their core and to communicate with the horses and, and be comfortable in the horses too, so that's awesome. Can you remind me, do you have a dedicated steam teacher?
Yes.
You do, okay, because I remember for a long time that position wasn't filled, is it?
It was half.
It was half time, yeah. And, and it's. And, and it's full. Okay, awesome. Um, you have some really unique partnerships that I think a lot of our schools don't have. Subaru and the Menlo Math. I think those are exciting.
Yeah, Subaru came, I don't, I don't remember how it showed up. Yeah. Were you with them? Okay. Yeah. So it was, we inherited it. I wasn't a payment as my, I was gonna claim it as my own, but I can't.
You can claim it. You can claim it. Oh, yeah.
Yeah. So they came donated a bunch of books. Cool. So we looked at books about um, uh, on green topics, you know, like trash and that's, if you look at the Subaru Promise, it, it's an education piece and it's a lot about science related stuff. So they brought us a ton of books. Ms. Ariano worked on looking at them and then we donated them to each classroom library, right? Um, and so the, and then we, we uh, and then the representative was like, oh, you know, if you're interested in something for Halloween, they're like, sign us up. So they came and uh, our community specialist, uh, she was able to um, get a donation of four hundred Halloween buckets. So, I mean, all the candy got taken. You know, so it was, it was, it was a fun, you know, place. But yeah, so they're gonna come again next year. I'm pretty excited about that.
So David, I debated whether or not to share this story. Um, but in light of your comments about getting the hugs and high fives at Taft and not at Kennedy. Um, about a year ago, maybe, my husband and I were downtown at the movie theater. Um, and it was, it was a busy Friday evening. Um, and when we were leaving, I guess I was giving off mom vibes because I walked out of the theater and a group of students rushed me. And they came over and they said, um, can you order us an Uber to get us home? We're stuck here because I can't use Apple Pay on the Uber app. And this is, it, it's actually um, a really frustrating system that Apple has in, in place. And I know this because I go through it with my own kids. So we said, sure. Got them an Uber and we were waiting with them until it arrived. And I, you started prodding and asking some questions. It turned out they were Kennedy students.
Okay.
Um, and so they knew I was a parent there. Um, but I didn't, they didn't know my role with the district. And so I was just asking questions and um, they raved about you.
Oh.
They were so happy having you there. And they just thought you're amazing. I think they used the word chill.
Really?
Yeah. So um.
With my bullhorn and yelling at everybody's kids in class?
So um, and you know, I threw, you know, my own son and his friends, because they told me what they think. And so you um, are really good at building rapport with students. And so I think you need to give yourself credit for that.
I didn't realize I was loved so much there. I remember when I told everybody I was leaving, you could hear that yell in the background, you know? You know, somebody told me that in the bus, they're like, Mr. Camerano is not at Kennedy no more. They're like, yeah, you know, whatever. It's okay. But it's fun. It's fun. I always make that joke. Cause you know, Kennedy was a really great place to me as well, you know? And it's just like, it's just different, right? And now I get hugs and it's, I got hugs at Kennedy. I'm not lying. But it's it's just, you know, middle school versus elementary. It's just different. It's different.
But you can certainly tell that elementary does suit you, David, even though it was, you had high school, middle, and now elementary. I've been there when the gate opens at eight o'clock and you're giving those high fives to all the kids as they come in. So congratulations and, and moms, you know, and dads stopping to talk to you at that point in time.
I get coffee.
Right, right. And, and, and they're great. They're great. I mean, it's a community that um, school is definitely the hub.
Yeah.
Is the hub for that community. And whenever there is an issue, they are coming to you or, or to Karina to figure out how they can work on a problem together.
Yeah.
But um, your personality along with the academics that you bring with you and the experience definitely does show that there is a difference happening.
Thank you.
At the school site. One of the things that I really, um, and I know you probably all read his bi-weekly newsletters like I do, but how he makes them kind of personal. He'll have his family or he'll have his kids with their, with their, with their soccer uniforms. And it, and it's a little, little paragraph that starts out. And then he starts into his explanation of what's going to be happening at the school and so forth. And the parents, it's kind of a connection for them. Here they have a principal has two guys at home. So he kind of knows what we're going through. So that, that connection is, is really a plus. So I, I really want to commend you on that. And the other piece that we've been talking about individually are his, his data sheets. And he does go through the data with his staff. And I know we'll be looking at it again in a few weeks, but not only with you, but other principals. But his data sheets are really good. Um, it's something that I kind of um, have copied for the other principals to start using for this next go around. And uh.
Can we do some examples? It sounds great.
Oh, sure. We can see examples of it. Yeah. Um, and uh, we'll take the students' names off it and so forth. So that, that's not on there. But um, that's a really good practice that you have started there at Taft.
Thank you.
And the teachers and other staff members at Taft are doing a fantastic job. And you will see progress. There is progress that is moving forward. And I know Jenny's going to be presenting in a little bit, but um, not presenting on, you know, individual schools. But when I look at the, the data, I'm looking at individual schools. So I'm seeing the progress that is happening. So it's working. So to the Taft staff, thank you so much for everything you're doing. Karina, thank you so much for all your hard work that you are bringing forth at, at Taft. And then there was um, what was the other thing I had written down? Cause there's a communication, the data sheets. And, and just to continue that, the, the, continue the, the, the movement that you have with the parents right now is, is great with the coffees. And, and, and bringing it forth and, and those communications that you have and just open forums of, you know, what's happening? How can I help you? What's, what do we need here at Taft? And what could we do better? So I applaud you for that. Thank you so much. Thanks.
Thank you very much, folks.
Thank you, Orion and Taft. Um, you're welcome to leave. I know it's late. We do have a couple of interesting data presentations if you want to stay, but we understand if you want to cut out. Um, so we are on six point two report on local indicator measurement for the California dashboard. Is that Anna?
Yes. Trying to find it on my computer now. I'm like, let me see. Good night. Come on, having a hard time. It hasn't opened. But it's not coming out. See, it's only coming out here on Google. Yeah, it's in, um, yeah, it's in my Google. It's.
Yeah, definitely. Cause it will be nine o'clock.
That's what happens with mine.
Okay, we're gonna take a five-minute break for the audience. Um, so while we get this presentation up, um.
It's not even doing anything.
We'll be back in five minutes. All right. Thank you, everyone. Um, we can go ahead and get started with the dashboard report.
All right. Thank you. So Jenny Chan, I know is on as a panelist and she'll be um, going over our two data, the dashboard and the iReady today. Jenny, are you on? I know that Jenny has been feeling sick. So um, we'll help her along today. But we're gonna start with our uh, school dashboard. And so some of the data that'll become, that was just released in September.
So my advance, apologize if I start coughing a lot. If I cough, when I talk, but um, I'll try to make it we. So good evening, members of the board. Um, today I will have two presentation for you. And the first one today is the um, California School Dashboard. Go ahead, next slide. So um, just a quick recap on what's the dashboard is and what, what informations are on there. So Cali, state of California recognized that there are many different elements that are critical to um, you know, our kid being healthy, happy, and learning and growing in their school. So um, they have put together a priority that would drive our district funding. And to measure these eight um, with priority, and we also call, some of us call it LCL priorities. There are at least either a state or a local indicator in play to show our progress toward each priority. So this chart kind of give you a summary of what are the state indicators in place and what the local indicator in place. For today, our focus is actually on the state indicators, which we publish on the dashboard. So um, next slide. Um, California School Dashboard is designed just for that purpose to report on many of these measurements for the committee and for the federal and state accountability. This dashboard is released annually each fall. Um, before pandemic, we've seen this dashboard before. Um, when the pandemic happened, um, up until last year, uh, we did not have this five by five colors because we couldn't, we did not have a um, uh, ability to have a consistent data to compare growth for students. So this is actually the first year that we are fully implemented this five by five California School Dashboard. Um, there are many indicators on the dashboard, but each indicator is assigned with a status that go from very low to very high. And the change that indicate whether our performance increased significantly to decline significantly. And the combination of the status of where we are right now and the change how we did compared to last year will determine a performance color. And that, you know, um, there are five color on the dashboard going from the lowest red um, and then orange, yellow, green, and blue. Next please. So um, you probably already know this information, but I just want to put it out there just to remind. So the, the student group that are being reported on the dashboard are our student and then all the race ethnicity, including African American, American Indian, Asian, Filipino, Hispanic, Pacific Islander, white or two or more races. Um, also students in special program like English learner, disability, socioeconomic disadvantaged student, homeless and foster youth. Next please. Um, this is just information not only. Um, so basically, um, only student group with thirty or more students are accountable on the dashboard. Um, except for foster youth and homeless. We only need fifteen or more students, then we're accountable for them on the dashboard. So let's say if we only have um, twenty-nine students who are Asian, then we're not accountable for that student group on the dashboard. It would need to be in generally thirty or more students. So sometime, um, if you look into a dashboard and the student information is not available, mostly because they're under the, the threshold um, for accountability. Okay, next slide. So um, the dashboard for two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three was published in December. Um, this is the phase when you get in. Um, so this is just the general information of our district enrollment and demographic information as of census day, which was October two thousand twenty-two. Next slide. Um, on the dashboard, you will see all indicators. Um, the state indicators would have that uh rainbow color of five colors. The local indicator, you will see either we have standard net or standard not met. Um, so for Redwood City, we have always been um, having the standard net for local indicator. Um, and then for the state indicator, there are chronic absenteeism, suspension rate, English learner progress, EOA and math. Um, most of our students landed on orange color. Um, with English learner progress landed in red and mathematics landed in yellow. And I'll go in over the detail for each of these indicators for the next slide. So um, academic performance EOA, this measure how well students are meeting their grade level standard based on their performance in the English language art portion of the CASP, which were taking in spring of two thousand twenty-three. Um, only student in grade three to eight take the test. So we can see that um, on the first uh snapshot right there is our school. Um, we are twelve point three points below standard. And they just say that we maintain two point two points. Um, it's mean that we have maintained our performance compared to last year. That give us a status of orange. So to the right, you will see um, how the state uh are doing. They are pretty close to us. They're thirteen point six point below standard. Then they also maintain the performance, performance compared to last year. Next slide. Here is um, how all our student groups are doing in English language art. Most of our, most of our student group end up in the orange color. Some end up in blue. Uh, but the two student group that um, end up in red, oh, actually, it's only one. English learners is the only student group that are um, performing very low on EOA. And next. Um, for math, again, this measure how our student is meeting grade standard from math portion of the CASP. Only grade three to eight take the test, took the test in spring. Um, for math, we are at yellow color. We have thirty-five point nine points below standard. However, we increased four point one um, points. This increase mean that last year we had forty points below standard, but basically negative point. Um, but this year, we only thirty-five point, thirty-five point nine below grade standard. So we basically improved four point one points. That put our status performance become yellow. Um, so uh, on the right, you will see the state is forty-nine point, one points below standard. And they maintain and they stay the same. That give them a status of orange. Overall, our student is doing um, a little bit better than the state in the uh, math. Next please. This is how our student groups are doing. Um, for math, uh, one thing to point out here is we have two student group that are doing very low on uh, math is African American and English learner. We have some student group are doing um, in orange. That's most of our student group actually. And then we have some in blue and some in green. Next slide. Um, the next indicator is English learner progress. The, uh, we call ELP. Um, ELP measure, look at the progress that an English learner student are making toward achieving their proficiency by taking the LPAC test each spring. Um, the result from the LPAC score, I use to calculate their progress. And because of the two years of data I require, um, only student in grade one through eight are included in this measure. So as a district, we have forty point one percent of our English learner increased at least one LP level or maintain the level four, because you cannot increase anymore. That's the highest level. Um, with this percentage, it translates into a status of low performance because we have declined fourteen point eight percent from last year. We were at fifty-five point seven percent of our student making progress last year. Okay, uh, comparing to the state, um, even though you see the state have uh, the state make forty-eight point seven percent progress, just a little bit higher than us. Um, but they maintain their performance. They did not decline. So their status is actually two status ahead of us, yellow. Um, next slide, please. So um, this would tell you, show you um, uh, the comparison between last summative LPAC two thousand twenty-three versus the year before two thousand twenty-two. So this is um, so you can see that, but look in the purple color, the number of year who progress at least one LP level. Uh, we actually uh, decline. Next please. So summative alternate LPAC. Um, this is a brand new test that launched in two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two. And because we need two years of data to see growth. So last year, we did not talk about it. This was no growth. It is the uh, uh, yeah, there's no growth. So when the twenty-two, twenty-three LPAC came out with this dashboard, um, we able to see one year growth. So basically seventy point nine percent of our student, when they took this test, um, uh, they did not show any progress between twenty-three and the year before. So for summative out, alternate LPAC, um, it's only for English learner who have the most significant cognitive disability. Um, that is like about less than one percent of our uh, uh, student population. The alternate LPAC is similar. The purpose of the alternate LPAC is similar to the summative LPAC, which is to measure student progress. But alternate LPAC is designed to measure um, the uh, the, this special at student ability to only express and receive information through different communication modes. So whatever communication mode that already being used in the classroom, that's what being used on the test to help student to help us be able to measure whether student has achieved the proficiency in English. Next please. The next indicator on the dashboard are chronic absenteeism. This measure show how many students who were absent for ten or more of the instructional day they were enrolled in the school. And then, but only the student who enrolled for thirty-one days or more are calculated in the chronic absenteeism rate. So we see that there's a positive sign that our chronic absenteeism declined two point six percent from last year. And then at the twenty-four point eight percent, we are in color orange for the dashboard. We are compared to the state. If you can see that our chronic absenteeism and the state chronic absenteeism are pretty similar, twenty-four point eight versus twenty-four point three. However, they in yellow, we in orange, because the state is showing a five point seven decline, a bigger decline than us. So that's why they have a one more color high up than us. Next slide. This is how our student groups are doing in chronic absenteeism. It's all spread out. But again, we noticed that our African American group are having very high chronic absenteeism. So they're receiving the red color dashboard. Next please. Okay, suspension rate. So suspension rate is the measure of the number of students who have suspended for one full day. So if the student is counted once already at one school, they would not be counted again for another school if you're looking at the district count. You can see that our suspension rate has went up zero point four percent. And we are at three point two suspension and a color orange. We're pretty on bar with the state. Next slide. This is how our students are doing for suspension indicator. And here we see it again, African American group are having higher suspension rate than other student group. So they in red. Next slide. So what are we, with all these data result on the dashboard, what are we, what are we being held accountable for? So the state accountability system is using what we call differentiate assistant framework, where the result from the student group data are being used to determine our district eligibility for assistance. The goal is for the county and the state to support the district to meet the need of the student being served. So there are different ways that a district become eligible for different differential system, either through state priority, local priority, or a combination of both. For Redwood City, since our students, all of our local indicator have been met for our years, we would only be in differentiate assistant due to performance of our student group in the state priority. In this case, it will be priority four, five, or six. Next slide. So the criteria to be in differentiates assistant is that a student group need to meet the criteria in two or more priority. So for priority four, you consider, the student group consider meet criteria if they are red in both E O A and math. Red in E O A or math and then orange in the other. Or red in their English learner, English learner progress. So any of these red, they consider meet one criteria priority four. If the student group is red in chronic absenteeism, they consider meeting criteria priority five. If the student is red in suspension, then meaning criteria priority four. So that student group would be in differentiate system if they're meeting criteria for priority four and five, or five and six, or four and six. So it's a combination of two or more priorities. Next slide. So this is how our each of our student group are doing based on their two thousand twenty-three dashboard. There are two student group that standing out from this view right here are African American and English learners. Because they have many red in their performance. For African American, they have red in math, red in chronic absenteeism and red in suspension. And because these three red are in three different priority, they met the criteria for differentiation system. So we will be in differentiate system for African American starting this year. For English learners, they have three red in E O A math and English learner progress. However, all these three red are in one priority. So they would not consider being at the the criteria for differential system. So we would only have one student group, which is African American. And for those of you who wonder how many African American student we have, from the data from last year, we have roughly about forty-nine to fifty students. So also something new this year is that starting with two thousand twenty-three dashboard, once the district is eligible for differential system, we will receive two years minimum of support from the county. So it gonna go from dashboard to dashboard. So we'll have to wait into the next year dashboard data and see how we're doing and to determine whether the support will continue. But it would, the support would be two years. The eligibility will be determined annually though. So let's say we are eligible for differential system for one group this year. Next year, let's say I would pick a group, two or more races somehow meet the criteria. Then we, our differential system will be extended for two years from next year dashboard, so two thousand twenty-four to two thousand twenty-six. So basically, every year they're gonna determine the eligibility. And each time we are determined for eligible, we are getting support for two years. Does that make sense? Does anybody have any question?
I do have a question, Jenny.
Yes, yeah.
When you talk about getting support, can you explain that please? What the, what that means?
Right, so a lot of districts would, or people would say current system is bad, is a bad thing. Like, you know, basically you're getting monitored. But from the eyes of the state is that when the district is getting to process system, we will get help from the county to, they will be, actually, we get money from the state, the county will get the money from the state. And they will put more resources staff in there. And they will work with our district staff to make sure we create the plan and put in resource to address, you know, the issue and the performance to make sure that our African American group, the student group that are on different, to make sure their performance are improving. So it's more like an eligibility, you're right, we be getting more support from the county.
Thank you. Anyone else?
At what point do we get the support? And what does it look like in terms of if the support is dollars, what quantity of dollars? If the support is time or aids from the district, when do those arrive?
I think the county probably already reaching out to Anna or maybe soon, or probably already did to start on the process. And no, we do, we would not get any money for a different assistant. We'll get the support in terms of times, a lots of meeting to go over. And they're gonna ask us like, for example, what kind of data you have to show that you're monitoring this? How are your African Americans doing in math? What is your strategy in? So they actually make us to provide a plan specifically. And also, we'll have to specifically point out the support and the strategy for this student group also in our L C A.
Have we been in differentiated assistance before? Yes.
Yes.
When was the last time we exited differentiated assistance?
We were in it last year.
Okay.
So we were in it last year, so there were different part, I mean, the same priorities. And so when you, if you guys remember when you guys read probably the L C A, we didn't, had, didn't have to be named out in the L C A, but the new L C A, we have to name it that we're in difference and why. But if you remember, all the schools in their SIPSAs had A T S I, which is attention. And so they were in there. So one of the things that we were in were chronic absenteeism. So we're out of that for this year and we had multiple different school sites. Most everybody was for students with disability and suspensions and in chronic absenteeism, many of the sites. So a lot of them are out of that. But we as a district are in it for these two parts for African Americans. But we are monitoring, we have to monitor all of our reds, which is our schools, our English learners, as well as our African Americans in all of these areas. So the new L C A will address all of these issues. We have to create a plan that will be embedded in the L C A to address the, any reds that we have on the dashboard.
I would suppose that the good news here is that we're talking about small percentages of a small cohort, so that literally moving the needle for one, two, three students could make a very large difference in the colors that we're seeing here.
That is correct. That is correct. Anybody else?
Yeah, so you know, the data we're looking at was from what spring of, what are we in now, twenty twenty? Twenty-three, yeah, so you know, it's so interesting because by the time we really get the data and stuff, you're almost, I mean, it's not quite a year, but you're getting towards that. So it's always interesting to me to look at it reflecting and we've got so many new things that we've been doing. So you know, it's hard to see a lot of these.
Your mic is resetting.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's resetting. Yeah, but it did, it decided on its own, it didn't like my voice coming through it. You know, it's hard to see all the reds and oranges, you know, we'd like to see more yellows, greens and blues, of course. So, but I know, you know, we're, we're doing a lot of the right things. So one of the things is, you know, we have a lot of data that the teachers and the principals and you all at the district office is looking at. And so I was curious, you know, in an honest way, how useful is this compared to the other thing? Because you know, the color schemes and everything are kind of interesting. And all the, you know, the, and I'm just, I'm just curious, I mean, are we just gonna stay focused? And we know that we're gonna do what we need to do, which is, you know, get the kids reading and get the kids learning math. And you know, this is sort of a byproduct of something that we need to do and pay attention to. But anyway, so you know, I think it's useful to look at. I think the reality is we just need to do the work we're doing and we're, and I know we're making progress. I'm hopeful next year, things will look better. I know one of the things I was a little surprised at was kind of just the suspension rates, because I've seen those going down. So it's sort of interesting that, you know, for whatever reason, you know, we're not where we want to be on suspension rates. You know, everybody's been struggling with chronic absenteeism, but we know that kids need to get in school. So I know we're working on that. And then I was kind of curious on the English learner. Do any districts get a lot of those kids? I mean, because they're learning English and as they get reclassified, they get out of the English learner. I'm just curious, how hard is it to to move from red to orange or yellow with the students who, once they're proficient, they exit out of the program that you're testing them? You know what I mean? It's a weird one to me, so I don't know if you can speak to that at all.
I was looking at this today because Mike had the same question. And so I, and so did, so did David. So I think one of the things that when you look at, and we don't have the data here, but when you look at school sites, when you actually look at the individual school sites, you'll see that some school sites made huge gains. And then you see some like huge, huge dips. So when we look at those schools and that we have four that are really, that made really, you know, that dropped, but were had been steady. So something happened within those, that grouping of that test. But the L P A C test itself changes. So Kinder is one test, second K, every year K one, two is a different test. Third, fourth and fifth grade is the same test. So there's opportunities in third through fourth or fifth grade that it is the same exact test. They have to practice those skills. But when you get into middle school, it almost is like a standardized test. It is very difficult. And it's the same test for sixth, seventh and eighth, but the reading is almost like if you're looking at the state standardized test cast. So it's very, and all of it is on computer. And actually, we were talking today about how even on the cast testing, I was talking, we were talking about stamina, how we have to build stamina with a lot of our kids, because the sustainability on all of these tests take a long time. And so the sooner, and the sooner we reclassify kids in the younger grades, the better, because their stem, the test gets harder and harder. And you have to remember, they take this test in February, so we, we start February and then they go right into cast. Well, last year it was this, we went into eye ready and then we went into cast. So the kids were being tested throughout, from February all the way to May. That's a lot of testing that happens, so that also becomes test fatigue, right? So I think when we look at all of this, there's a lot of things for our, our English learners that we're putting into place. But it is, we, I look at it more as school site to school site. And then what do we need to do to target at those school sites to make sure that everything is happening? That their E L D classes are happening, which is a state requirement. And you know, we have curriculum, we had curriculum and probably wasn't as robust and teachers weren't using it. So they were using what they could to do it. So now that we have a more of a curriculum, we're hoping we'll start seeing more gains.
Because we did hear that, hear that pretty consistently from teachers that they didn't have the curriculum they needed a couple of years ago. And so some of these kids were not getting what they needed, yeah. Anyway, and I think some of the scores are still a result of COVID. I mean, we're still coming out of that, right? So anyway, I'm hopeful that next year they'll, they'll look better.
So I do have the answer to most of your question. I hope that would make sense. So the first one I heard is that you weren't, it's weird that we're in almost two thousand twenty-four, talking about two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three dashboard. But the state is trying to, because you know, all these data come from us, we do the reporting, push it up to them and then they, they, they analyze and they come out these numbers. So they are trying to push all the district to try to submit data early every year. So eventually, and so like this year, we got our dashboard published December fifteenth. Next year will be published December first, and then the year after next will be November fifteenth. Eventually, when we get to the year that is October thirtieth, that will be the day going forward that we'll get our dashboard. But they doing it slowly. The second question I heard about is the suspension. So I heard the comments that, you know, the principal are, when they presented the data, it seems like their suspension has improved, but they, that did not reflected on the dashboard. That is because something you might have to take into consideration is that the, the dashboard is suspension rate is based on the count of student being suspended, not the count of the actual incident and suspension that actually happened in school. So you may have a principal knowing, oh, last year I have ten kids with fifty-six suspension. But this year I only have twenty suspension. Oh, of course, my suspension improved. But guess what? This year, the twenty suspension involved twelve kids. So you actually suspended more student with less suspension, but more student. So that caused the rate to, to, to go up. So that one thing.
Thank you for that explanation, because I was having disconnect, so that makes a lot of sense. So actually, I mean, the good news is we are, you know, we don't want one student to have five or six suspensions either. So anyway, that's, that's helpful to, to think about. Thank you.
Okay, and then for the E O A and math performance for the English learners. So some school district does complain that you, one, at, at one point, you want us to reclassify more student. But at the same time, the more we reclassify, then become reclassified and no longer English learners. So when the student take the test in the spring, we end up with a bunch of English learners who are less proficient, because we reclassified all of our profession speaking English learners. So how does it work like? So turns out that for dashboard purpose only, the English learners on here included all your current English learner and any student who've been reclassified for the past four years. So they do include our R F E P, even though they call English learner, but they. So they do include our R F A P, even though they call English learner, but I guess they call it forever. It's like, once you're an English learner, you kind of like forever an English learner. But for to give it right, fair and, you know, makes sense. They include the R F A P student in the English learner count also, so that it would not hurt the district when it comes to the performance for English learners. I hope that makes sense.
That does, so then, yeah, it doesn't really explain the, the reds then.
The red, right. Right, it doesn't. But for the L P, that one is specifically just English learners because only student who are English learner take the LCAP, the R F A P kid don't. So one thing I, I mentioned to Anna is that, I know last year before Leslie Daniela, our previous director left, she pushed really hard to reclass, every, classify every single kid. So basically we're testing May first and May second, the result come out, she reclassified them like five days after. So we classified a lot of kid before we took the, the LCAP in spring. So mostly the kid that took the test are lower, less proficient, like level three and below. So that may be contribute to the result of being red. Yeah.
And that's still going on today. So Catherine has also continued to reclassify, especially starting at middle school, where it's so important before they go to high school. So she definitely has continued what Leslie started in, in terms of reclassifying. And making sure, looking at the data that just came out most recent, because it is based on their E L A and math as well for cast.
I mean, I, I understand how it can fuzz the data in some ways to be rapidly reclassifying, but I, I think we should do it anyhow because A, it's right for the kids and B, it produces like a really clear data trail about like how, how quickly did we actually get these kids' English proficiency?
Oh, absolutely. Want to do anything to this, this stuff, just like every time I look at it.
Mike, did you have any?
No, just, yeah, this is, this is tough. It's one, it's one number at the end of the year. It's not really the progress and it's like, it's accumulate, it's a summative score. It doesn't tell us how they're doing on a, building up their basic skills or what kind of progress they're making, what growth is happening in there. I, I do think it tells more of a story than just differentiated assistance. So I think that there's questions that can come out of it. But I think that looking forward, particularly because of the amount of changes that have been put in place from last year to this year, you know, is the right thing to do, which fortunately is going to be our next agenda item anyways.
Yeah, it's, it's frustrating to see so much orange on here and, and the red too. Because I know pre pandemic, we had a lot more yellow and green. And I know that these results are really due to the pandemic. So like Elisa said, I think that, you know, next year we'll see improvement too and get back up and beyond where we were before the pandemic. Thank you, Jenny. Saw the presentation come back up.
Yeah, so then now we'll move on to Jenny, we'll continue with. Diagnostic.
So, okay, I'm just gonna jump right in. It's the time of the year, look at how our kid is doing, you know, halfway through the academic years. So next please, Anna. So this just give you a quick look of how many student that we got tested. One thing to note is that I already, it's get a bit confusing this year for reading. I already only grade second to eight are required to take the test. A lower grade K, TK two, one is like optional. So even though you see first grade here, that's why the number is so low because it's optional, some school took it. I'm down, so I just leave the number there. With the number of student who took the task for grade second to eight, we are at ninety-seven participation. So most of our kid take it. And then on the right, you see the number of English learners, newcomers, long-term young, and then student with disability. These are the students who that we will focus of our presentation today. Because that's where our, most of our school are in assistant status. So we want to look at how these kids are doing in their performance for academics. Next slide.
And just to add to that, so that you guys know, the reason we're not doing first K one is because of all the new assessments with B P S D and Fastbridge for our younger students.
So this is how we doing for winter, it's just a simple graph. It's a, I would say a even distribution, but overall thirty-nine percent are on a above level. And then majority are seeing sixty-one percent are below benchmark. Next please. With that, how did we do compared to the fall? You can see we moved a little bit. The green on above level kind of expand a little bit. And then the yellow, red, orange shades are like shrink a little bit. So there's some progress in term of how the student is changing their placement level on their task. Next slide. So this is how each of our grade level are doing in winter already. There's a very obvious color that stand out on this screen is thirty percent of our middle school students, grade six to eight are falling three or more grade level behind. Next slide. I know this one is one of the board member favorite graph, but it doesn't shows what we hope to see. So sixty-five percent of student did not make change in their placement level between on winter. Next slide. However, when you don't, when we look at the data differently, instead of the change in the level, we want to see, we want to know did the kid make grow? So to do that, each of the student is provided when, with an annual expected growth score based on their baseline data they took in fall. This core, this core basically represent the number of point we would typically expect a student to grow on their test annually. So to monitor their mid-year progress, we take this expected annuals growth score and we divide it in half to determine the mid-year benchmark. So the, for the winter, fifty-three percent of students have meet, have met or exceeded their mid-year expected growth. And then I also have a comparison of what we did last year. So overall, we show some improvement in growth compared to last year winter. Next slide. Next, we want to look at how our English learner is doing, especially how long-term English learner doing compared to English learner who are not long-term. So long-term English learner in this case are defined as five or more years of being English learner. Non-long-term are less than five years of being English learner. So we can see a, a, a big learning gap between these two groups, even though they're both English learner.
The, the L T L population is relatively small though, right? I mean, we don't see the ends on this graph.
Yes, the L T L numbers is actually on slide two. And actually that is five hundred and forty-eight kids out of one thousand five hundred, so one-third.
Oh, that's larger than.
That's larger, yes. One-third of our English learner are L T L. The non-L T L is the two-third. But the percentage and proportion is the, the, the percentage of the placement is within their own five hundred population. So, so seventy-one percent out of five hundred and forty-eight kids are below three or more grade level standard. Next slide. There's another way of looking how English learners doing is we're comparing how our newcomers, English learner versus non-newcomer English learner is doing. Newcomer in this case is defined as English learner who born outside the U S and wouldn't, and have been in the U S less than three years. Non-newcomers are English learner who were born in the U S or born outside the U S, but in a U S for more than three years. I don't know, it sounds confusing right there, but hopefully everybody get it. But compare between these two groups, they're pretty comparable, not so much of a, a different graph, a gap between these two. But again, all our English learners, majority are soon are below grade level. Next slide. Student with disability. Right here, we're looking at our S W D student, but we split into student with disability who are in S T C program and student with the B who in only resource program. So I think you, we've seen this pan before, we've seen this data before for the fall. Majority of our student in S T C student are doing not as well as the non-S T C group. Next please. I'm sorry. So for math, winter, for math, only grade one through eight. I keep, I keep mistook between reading and math, but from math, grade one through eight are required to take the math assessment. So Kinder will not require. So that's why you see some very low participation on the Kinder. With this number of student tested, we have nine-four percent of our grade one through eight tested already. In math, next slide. This is how our student doing for winter math. One thing stand out here is one-third of our first to eighth grader are one grade below in winter. So that's the orange color right there. Next slide. Here's the comparison of how we are in term of regular, how the student are doing in, in term of their placement on level. We saw, we'll show some improvement compared to the fall. Next slide. Here is how our student relative placements are by grade level. You can see one thing stand out here is that there are significant percent of our first grader are one grade level behind in then. And then as the, a grade levels increase, the number of student below grade level, two or more grade below kind of also increased. Next slide. And then sixty-three percent of students did not make any change in their grade level performance between on winter. Next slide. However, using the mid-year growth score, we're able to see that, you know, there's a slight increase with forty-nine percent of our student meeting their, their mid-year growth, and that is a slight increase from last year, we were forty-six percent. Next slide. This is how our English learners doing in their math. Majority of our E L English learner also below grade level. But for our long-term English learners, majority of them are ended in the three or more grade level below. For the non-long-term, the performance are kind of spread out in all the levels, one, one grade level below, two grade level below, three grade level below. Next slide. How our E L student is doing comparing between newcomers and non newcomers? Very interesting that these two groups are pretty comparable in, in terms of how they're doing in each of the placement level. Next slide. For this is how our student participating doing. And you can see also that same pan that we see in reading. Both of our S T C students are three or more grade level below. While the non-S T C student are spread out between the three lowest grade level performance. And that's all I have for today.
Thank you, Jenny. Any questions from the board?
I mean, you, you sounded a little disappointed when you were voicing fly, slide fifteen on the fall-winter change in placement level, but I actually took a more cheery note from that than you did maybe, but the, the thirty percent of our students advanced at least one level between fall and winter, which is actually not bad at all. And only six percent regressed and it's actually outperforming the advances that we saw on the English side on, on slide six. So I, I took a cheery note that like ma- math, math progress is actually going better than expected from this data.
Sorry.
I mean, or, or is the, is the fall test the same as the winter test?
No. No, it would be a different test.
Right, so.
Well, different questions.
Right, but they're continuing to learn additional math. So my point is, yeah, it's, I agree with you, that's good news.
What's the version of this slide that we had last year? And if we look at the delta there, yeah, is, are we getting some glimmers of light that the illustrative math curriculum is, is starting to pay off? Is, is my real question here?
I mean, you'd think it would take a couple of years since, you know, the teachers are just learning it along with the students and anyway, but who knows? I mean, I guess we could go back and look at the presentation. Jenny, thank you. Jenny, thank you so much for all your work on this. You do such a good job displaying all the data and making it really easy to understand. Appreciate that.
You're welcome. Anybody else?
No, thanks for, yeah, thanks for putting together the presentation. I know last year we were saying, you know, we need new curriculum. And that was kind of like when we looked at the data, because I, I mean, you know, like our, our English, you know, our emerging bilingual, multilingual students are not, you know, they're, they're not showing as well on the data as we want them to. And we said we need a new curriculum. I think it's going to obviously take time. As I had mentioned on, at the dashboard, I think that there's probably, even, even this I ready number doesn't tell us like what basic skills are they getting and how that's happening. You know, at, at, at some point, we'll want, we want to see the numbers going at that point. This feels a little bit early on that winter assessment, but it is nice to be able to look at the fall to winter and be able to see, yeah, there, there's some growth going on there and we'll just have to keep monitoring it. I think that the new curriculum for both math and for English is the right thing to do and that's the right place to keep investing and continuing that time. So I think we hold the course and keep watching for progress and, and hopefully the, you know, the leadership is looking at, hey, are there adjustments that need to be made? And when you see them and, you know, are making adjustments and that's what you've done in the past. And that's what I expect is going to continue in the future. So thanks for presenting.
And Anna, when is the spring assessment?
The spring is in March.
Thank you. Thanks, Jenny.
David, to answer your question, actually for reading, we're exactly the same on the winter. Fall, winter, last year and fall, winter this year, in term of like the percent of student who did not change and the percent of student who improve in their level. Yeah, like almost like I think sixty-five versus, it is sixty-five, so sixty-five versus sixty-five. And then for the green color is, is twenty-five last, twenty-six last year versus twenty-six this year. Very interesting, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we are moving on to consent items. There are motion to approve.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Item eight point one, approval of the twenty-three, twenty-four first interim budget report.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, excuse me. Sitting here through those presentations, not talking. Good evening again, everyone. Tonight, we're bringing the first interim report for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year to the board for approval. As we go through this, we're a little bit late this year and we'll talk about that in just a minute. But in terms of the annual budget cycle, the first interim, which normally comes in December, is coming for approval tonight. Coincidentally, I should have put a star around the governor's proposed budget because that also came out today as well for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. And we will be bringing the audit report to the, for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. At the February seventh board meeting and our auditor will be here to discuss. That. Document as well. So as we go through this, a familiar slide, the first interim report covers July one through October thirty first of the fiscal year. The second interim goes through January thirty first. And if we are qualified as a district that second interim, then a third interim report is required. With that, this report is. Generally due forty five days after the October thirty first cutoff date for first interim. This year, we ran into several issues with the software and the reliability of data coming out of the software. Or budget development, along with some key staff members that were not available to assist during that time. So. The perfect storm, if you will, in late November, early December. And then working with the county, they're allowing us to do it tonight with their deadline to turn it into the state next Tuesday. So we've been working with them, they're well aware. And so I'd like to acknowledge and thank the county for working with us on this as we work through some of our issues. Not only with personnel, but with. Some of the data that was coming out of the state software. That was found to be mapping errors. That they are putting fixes out for now. So I'd also at this time like to acknowledge a couple of my staff members, Heather Park and Maria Morales. For really stepping up during this time period. In in doing what had to be done to get the support to the point that it was for this reporting period. So a big thank you to them. So as we go through this, on the overview, there's three certifications that a district assigns itself. Oh, as it turns it into the county office for review. Either positive, qualified or negative. Tonight, we are presenting a first interim report with qualified certification. And the reason for that, which we'll talk about a couple slides down. But it's because we have some unidentified fiscal stabilization measures. That we have to identify and once we do that, we'll be able to restore positive certification at second interim. So it's not something that I feel alarmed about right now, it's just there's some additional work to do. As we go down this path. Taking into account the changes that happened since the adopted budget in June. Along with new information that has gone come to us throughout the first half of this year. So when we go through this, the budget assumptions, these are some of the high level budget assumptions we used. Including this year's district enrollment. Projections for twenty four twenty five and twenty five twenty six. Average daily attendance and then our unduplicated pupil percentage. That you can say you can see is staying pretty flat right around that sixty percent mark. Local control funding formula this year was an exceptional cola year, eight point two two percent. For the first interim report, we use three point nine four. That was the best available information that we had at that time without guessing. And then today, Governor Newsom put out eight point seven six percent cola. For the twenty four twenty five school year, so. For us, it doesn't mean the same, it doesn't mean the same same thing to us as if we were an LCFF funded district. We'd be virtually getting no increase with this. Because we're a community funded district, we'll still receive our property taxes. The money that we allocate to my friend over here for. Her supplemental on concentration funds and some of the base LCFF funding. Will be relatively flat and and not as high as we were projecting the adopted budget for the twenty four twenty five school year. But it's not a decrease in funds for our school district.
Just to clarify though, it does mean that we need to give our charter schools more money, right? Because we have to give them the cola, don't we?
But we were projecting them at three point nine four percent, so we'd actually be giving them less money. Because the the percentage that we used for multi year projections was based on. The school services estimate back in late October. So we've increased them by three point nine four percent. This will actually only increase them by point seven six if the inactive state budget stays with. This LCFF cola point seven six percent. So it'd actually be more money staying with the district and less money for taxes and moved to charter schools.
I'm sorry, so the seven point whatever is for this school year?
No, the point seven six is the projected LCFF cola, so less than one percent.
Oh, I heard seven point. Point seven six, that makes a lot more sense, I was like, I have no idea where he's getting that cola from, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. You know, just given the state of the budget and stuff, okay, okay, thank thank you, I just misheard. So that's why I was very confused and just ignore everything I said then.
No problem, a good question, I'm sure.
No, I'm glad I got it clarified, so otherwise I would have left thinking that I was, yeah.
So yeah, less than one percent cola, which is extremely low. And and you know, two and a half. Basically. Percent lower than what we were projecting an adopted budget. Calsters and calpers remains unchanged in the. Assumptions as well as in the budget today, there was no money put towards either of the retirement systems by the governor and his budget proposal. Stepping column is one point five percent. We did increase property taxes from adopted budget from two point seven five to five percent. And then the consumer price index is what they were estimating in Octoberish. That has not, there's been no revision to that that comes out from our sources that we use. So going into fund zero one, the general fund showing the revenue differences. From adopted budget to first interim, we're showing an increase of approximately nine point seven million. And that's mostly coming from other state revenues where. We didn't know the exact number to project for a couple of programs, we've gotten that information now for this year. And we've used that for this year and our two out years for the increase in revenue. Here is a breakdown of those revenue sources showing about sixty three percent coming from our LCFF and property tax funds. The big one on here of note that's unchanged since budget adoption is the transfer in of our RDA funds of fourteen point three million dollars. Roughly ten percent of our revenue sources for twenty three twenty four. Here's just a pie chart, which I found out on the last presentation with board members like pie charts, so. Just a a visual way to break down the previous slide. Going into expenditures. Just as revenues increased, so did expenditures. A a couple of things of note on here where we see the biggest increases on books and supplies. And services and other operating expenses, that's because of some of those monies that came in. To revenue will be spent in those areas. Generally under restricted resources. The services and operating expenses as a reminder. Are all our contracted services, including PG&E, internet, phone systems, insurance. As well as the employees that were contracting. In various areas, including sped. And other places that are hard to fill that we've brought in contracted employees to fill those positions to provide. To administer and provide programs and services to our students. A breakdown on this slide shows it by percentage. I'm going to skip forward to the pie chart. This shows that about seventy one seventy five point one percent of our expenditures are to our employees. Between certificated classified and the benefits. Generally, school districts are somewhere in the seventy eight seventy nine eighty percent range. Which we would be as well if we weren't contracting out so many employees that fall into a different bucket. So we're right in line with other districts. Here you can see the ending fund balance for fund zero one. A minor change as we saw on a couple of the previous slides. The new revenues almost equaled new expenditures. Based on the that, so you can see here that we have a difference of three hundred and sixty one thousand dollars. Between our projected ending fund balance at adopted budget and now at first interim. Here's another. View of that transfer in from fund twenty five of the fourteen point three million as well. So going into our multi year projections. For this year and our two subsequent years, twenty four twenty five and twenty five twenty six. A recap of our total revenues for this year. Equalling about a hundred and forty one million, that includes the transfer in of the RDA funds. Expenditures and then going into twenty four twenty five and twenty five twenty six. The part I talked about on the first or second slide about the qualified status is because of those. Two numbers under fiscal stabilization plan of minus five million in twenty four twenty five. And twenty five twenty six of six point five million. With that, that allows us to meet our minimum economic reserve of three percent. And those will be identified, the work has already started on that and we'll continue on. Through second interim where, as I mentioned, we will have identified those measures. With that, we'll be taking a close look. At our vacancies and and what's going on now, other money that's encumbered that may not be spent. And then looking at, you know, programs and services in the district. And making sure that we're still providing what's necessary for our students. But making sure that we're doing it in an efficient manner, so that'll be the work over. You know, the next eight weeks or so before we come back with the second interim report. Also, any cuts that we do make, if they are ongoing. Cuts during this time period that takes away from the six and a half million dollars in the out year. So five million dollars of ongoing cuts would result in additional one point five million. Reduction in twenty five twenty six if they were one time cuts or one time savings. Then we'd have the five million and six and a half million dollars respectful respectively. Important to note, you know, this report doesn't normally come out on the day that the governor drops the budget on us. Obviously, none of that is factored into this multi year projection, so some of these numbers are. Already going to change because of that. Because of that projected cola for LCFF is going to change some of these numbers. So we'll start working on updating that, so we're working with the most current data as we go through our discussions. Over that time period to bring this back to the board. Going on here, you can see that we are making our three percent for economic uncertainty. But as the goal of three percent for the board mandated reserve, we're unable to fill that at this time. So that's another thing that we'll be looking at. I'm going to go back just one slide. Not only is the goal. And the need to identify that five million and six and a half million in either one time or ongoing cuts. But it's also the goal to work towards reducing the transfers in from RDA. In twenty four twenty five and twenty five twenty six. Potentially, we may have some savings even this year. But right now, the focus is really on those two out years to reduce, to identify those items and then also try and reduce. The transfers in.
Well, and as a reminder to the public, because we do have some people on Zoom and then people always watch our budget recordings after the fact. The RDA is really one time money and so that's what you're talking about, we need to be cautious in how much we're putting in because at some point. You know, it's the big chunk is going to go away, right? So. Five years, yeah, so. It's not something we have to worry about today necessarily because, you know, there's so much uncertainty in the next three years, it's hard to say. But it is something that we want to have available when we need it, so.
Yeah, and at least in the last several budget. Budget and interim reports, we've been able to minimize that through through. Through our processes and we want to look to do that again in our two out years.
Because in a way, it is a bit of, it's like having a bit of a reserve, you know? Which has always given me more comfort when we've we've rarely been able to meet our extra three percent board goal. But then I know, okay, we always have this RDA. Which has been really useful over the years, right?
Yeah, for sure. And it does, obviously, the. Right now, the fourteen point three million is bringing down that fund significantly. The past three dollars that are coming in annually stop in two thousand twenty nine.
Just a question on language here is as much for the board as anything else, but if we have a board mandated reserve. And we get told, no, you you can't have that. I mean, what what is the meaning of mandated, a hoped for, suggested?
But I mean, we we could have it, right? We have that choice to be able to say we want that funded or not, right?
Yeah, that's just an extra thing the board put into place years ago and then we just haven't been able to meet it lately.
So I mean, it it suggests a conversation about like, what's the degree to which like we we ought? We want to give that teeth versus just sort of make have that be something that we hope for. I mean, do we maybe at some point later, we we can go and pull some of the rationale for like. Why that was put in place and just make sure we we understand that. But before signing off on plans to just, you know, basically discard it.
Well, I can say that one of the reasons we put it into place was back in the Great Recession when we realized that we had some years when we were state funded. That the state told us how much money we had and then we set our budget. And then after the school year had started, they took money away. Or they delayed the cash flow of that money. And so we realized that it was important to have a bigger reserve than we had.
Right.
And I would say as a basic aid funded district typically, I mean, a district that's financially more stable than us. Has a larger reserve than the six percent, basic aid districts ought to be operating more. Recognizing that your property taxes can fluctuate a fair amount. Now, we've been fortunate in San Mateo County that the property taxes have continued to go up a little bit. But there are some areas where that's not true, so. Anyway, so ideally, you'd want to do six percent and the problem is we're qualified right now. And we know we're going to have to do five million dollars in cuts. So.
So it's.
Anyway, but but you're right, it is it is sort of funny, we call it mandated and yet if we're not meeting it, it's not really mandated, is it?
It doesn't seem like a mandate if we're, you know, signing off on like, let's not do it for the next three years. Now, the other take on this is like, hey, the the reason why we put language like that in there is for a rainy day. When budgets are getting really hard and it's raining is I think sort of the message here.
Well, and and we know that we had all this COVID surplus money and that's going away, so. Which is in part why we're needing to do some of the stabilization measures or the cuts, right?
What was the last time we had a qualified interim?
I I don't know.
Okay.
Since we've never had one, I'm trying to think in the, I think in the Great Recession we probably did, but. We haven't had one in a long time.
Not recently, so.
Not recently, so.
Okay.
I mean, it's lots of districts do have qualified and in fact, a lot of the state funded districts are having qualified. And in fact, this year with the state budget, we could see a lot more. I mean, it's going to be a big deal, we're going to be fortunate that we're basic aid and not state funded. But of course, you never, you know, you don't want to be qualified if you don't have to be.
Of course not, so I'm wondering, is there like a plain English summary of like, how how did we get in in this situation?
Yeah, I I'll touch on it, I mean, I think part of it too right now is. It really was, it was an influx of money into school districts through COVID, right? That every school district needed this money, not just for COVID, they just needed this additional money that came in seemingly out of thin air, right? Even the last district I was in, I mean, it was a windfall. Of money where we could do things, not only address needs of COVID, right? That the the things we had to do for safety at work or safety at schools, that type of thing. But also it allowed more resources to be brought in to help students, right? You have MTSS supports. Mental health across the board, things that are needed. And those things are of value. And we want to keep them, there's a lot of good things that came in because of COVID in Redwood City that we're trying to hold on to right now. But we didn't have money for it before COVID and we don't have money for it necessarily after COVID. So we're doing a stopgap of not getting rid of all programs and services that came in with that. We're using RDA funds to balance that out right now. And then looking at the the structural issues, right, of what's going on district in terms of enrollment, class sizes. Uh, so that we can be more efficient with how we're allocating dollars now that this influx of money is, is seeming gone.
Right. That makes sense. So it seems like we, we, we got kind of a influx of extra COVID dollars. We decided to spend those on programs. We're pleased with how those programs worked. The COVID money went away, but we are reluctant to. Wind down the programs that we spooled up with the COVID money and it's not, but it's not super clear. Where we're going to get the extra resources to be able to continue to fund tho- those programs that we brought into fruition during the COVID times.
That is a true statement.
Okay.
And so, like I asked you the other day, Rick, just to move from qualified to positive, all we have to do is identify.
Correct.
What we're reducing. Yeah. So, um, just naming those things.
Yep. And I think for context, I mean. Was it two years ago that the federal revenues was in the order of like eighteen, nineteen million dollars, whereas you can see now it's like five or six. And so that's. That kind of set the stage for, yeah.
And so my understanding um in talking to you is the process, the, the district. Superintendent and cabinet, you, you've already started. So you're going to be identifying various measures that we could take and then. The board will hear about that. The public, of course, can come and make comments and that sort of thing. So we'll go through that process. So. Wh- do you, have you decided? What, what is the, the date we need to make those decisions in terms of? Meeting requirements for human resources, for um finance, for staffing purposes? I'm just curious, like, are we talking in the next? Six weeks, eight weeks?
We're talking probably the next four to five weeks.
Okay, four to five weeks.
We started today, the.
Okay, so it'll be quick.
Yeah.
Okay.
When is the second interim?
Uh, it'll be presented on, it's either the twenty or twenty second of March. I don't remember the board.
So I think it'll be important uh to make sure then that, that agenda item. You know, it's explicitly stated. So if any of our parents or staff or anybody wants to provide comment as we make these important decisions, they're able to do that. So we'll just mean to make sure the word gets out because we don't want to have happen where we make a bunch of decisions and for whatever reason, people weren't informed. And didn't have an opportunity to, to give us their feedback.
Right.
So, yeah.
And not only be, um, we'll make sure that it's in a communicate that goes out.
Yeah, like even your superintendent weekly, you could, I, you know, link to it or something. Cause. This, I mean, generally speaking, we don't have that many people in the audience, but as soon as you talk, start talking about budget cuts, that's when people come out. And are interested in our budget.
And we've got to find five million bucks somewhere.
Yeah.
So TLDR.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Ready to let Rick finish his presentation? There's a couple more slides, I think.
Oh, okay. There's a couple more slides. Um. Uh, I'm not going to get into great detail on this one. This is just showing the adopted budget versus first interim. We've expected ending fund balances of other funds. Uh, through here, uh, the state budget, uh, state and national economy still. Uh, still addressing the shortage of teacher substitutes and classified staff, right? That's why we talked about the. Uh, operator, other services, the five thousands. Uh, we have employee negotiations coming up and then always looking at enrollment. Uh, inappropriate uh staffing due to that and uh needed programs and services. So with that, uh. Next steps, uh, and we've kind of talked about all these, uh, for the most part. Uh, the twenty two, twenty three audit will be brought back in February. We just got confirmation, uh, I think yesterday from our auditor that they'll be available for that meeting. Uh, the governor's budget proposal came out today. We'll continue to go through that to see if there's any other impacts to Redwood City. Uh, school district, uh, March, the second interim report. Uh, at that second board meeting in March, uh, the May budget revision, which uh should be interesting this year. Uh, and then in June, uh, we'll be coming back with the LCAP uh and the budget for our public hearing and then. Uh, adoption, uh, approval of the LCAP and budget adoption for twenty four, twenty five. So that, um, happy to answer any questions. We headed back to the board.
Other comments or questions?
Um, the only other comment I would make is, um, I was happy to see the balances in our other funds, like the child development and cafeteria. Right? Those look pretty good, I think, right? I mean, remember we were, we were concerned in the cafeteria fund that we didn't have enough money and we were going to be needing to take money from the general fund and. I think over the years, we've also had that happen with child development. So anyway, I just wanted to point out that this, this particular chart looks like good news, which is great. Um, I mean, if anything, you know, we probably, or we know that we have extra money in cafeteria that we could. Bend and we will if we could staff up, right? I mean, that's been one of our issues. Anyway, that, I just want to point out, that looks good.
And that's thanks to COVID too, right? I mean.
Good point.
With, with the free meals for all, uh, for all students and other funding that we've been able to. Uh. Hold a balance in there. And then there's also been some other fundings come in that will be used for kitchen infrastructure, uh, etc. Moving forward.
Anybody else?
I'll just say thanks, Rick, for putting this together. I know that it was kind of a, kind of a scramble on Heather and Maria and in your office for really working to get this together. And I guess the county for letting us work on that timeline that we were on there. Um, you know, it, it takes a lot of work to put this together. Uh, I think that, you know, most of my questions were really going to be around like, what's, what's the process? Make sure there's enough time for feedback and sort of everything. Before we get to the point where we have to approve the second interim by the deadline date, we want to have at least one conversation, maybe even two around what the proposed. Um, stabilization plans are. Uh, I, I do think that, you know, just like when we adopted the uh original budget at the. Beginning of the year, uh, it was, um. Uh, I, I think, I don't think that right now is the right time to build up the, the additional reserve in the general fund. Um, I think that, you know, we should set the stabilization part in, in place. And then. Once we have that set, then, then might be the right time to look. Cause I, I agree with Elisa that. As community, we, we've been fortunate that our tax rolls have always been going up, but I mean, there are going to be fluctuations. We've seen it already with like. Legal disagreements about large tax funds coming in and that can really affect the budget. So I think at some point. We will want to be able to build up a, a stronger buffer in the general fund for it, but. I don't think that right now is the right time to do it. Um, I think, you know, get the stabilization in, get it, get everything established and then we should come back and look and see. Okay, once we have that all together, how do we build up a little bit of resiliency for that? Um, you know, in the, in the coming years, but thank you.
I think that makes sense. I think we just want to make sure to record the uh thought about why we're not doing it now. And when we will do it. And then we bookmark it so that we don't forget and just sort of get lazy and like, keep it at zero percent. Cause who cares? So.
Yeah, I think we'll.
Cool.
Um, I just want to acknowledge too that Rick worked through his break to, to put this together. So thank you for your time on that and please. Extend our appreciation to um Maria and Heather also. Um, I know this has been hard on your department. So appreciate the work that you guys have put in. Are we ready to move on? So I actually.
We have to do an approval.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I'm sorry.
I'll make a mo- I'll make a motion to approve the budget.
Second.
The first interim.
Is that a second, David? Okay. All those in favor?
Hi.
Um, we actually need to pause for a second because I believe our policy says if we reach 10 o'clock, we have to take a vote on extending it. Is that right? Yes. Um, so we're almost through. Looks like we have like fifteen minutes, maybe.
Till ten thirty.
I'll just say till ten thirty. I don't think we need it, but.
Okay.
No. Yeah.
Do we need a, an actual motion or are we?
Sure. I'll make a motion to extend to ten thirty.
Sure.
Up to ten thirty.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you. Um. Um, board reports. I'll start. I have nothing since our last meeting.
Uh, say similar. I don't have anything since our last meeting.
Same.
Fiji and New Zealand are great.
Wow. Nothing. All right. Um, information on San Mateo County Investment Fund. Any questions? Uh, let's see, correspondence. We're not going to make it to ten thirty. Um. Possible other business suggested items for future agenda. All right, hearing none. Um, are there changes to the board meeting calendar?
The only question mark I have is for the January nineteenth meeting. We just got an email from.
Okay, Mike.
I'm sorry. Anna and I received an email from Catherine. We may have to be here for the exit report for the federal monitoring.
Oh, what time is that?
They want to start it at nine. I'm going to see if I can. So I'm going to see if we really have to be for the whole thing. Um, but I'll, I'll, I'll find that. I'll find that out tomorrow. Find that out tomorrow.
Um, all right.
And then let everyone know.
Okay, yeah. That brings us to the end. If there's a motion to adjourn.
I move, we adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you to the audience for sticking it out too. We can see, but several of you still here.